Okay, let's start the city council study session of June 6th. Do we, do you want me to hold off here a little bit? Anybody want to sing?
Okay.
Okay, now we can go for it. Meeting of June 6th is about to begin, starting out with citizens' comment on agenda items. Yes, no, no doll? We got some people. Good grief. Okay, let's go ahead and start with Herb Schillen, Schillenf, Schillenf. Hello Herb. Please give your name and address, spell your last name for us.
I'm Herb Schiller, 3900 Garrison. Wife and I, we built in 33, moved in in, I mean, 63, moved in in 64. And we've really enjoyed the city. We are deeply concerned what's going to happen on 38th. We've always enjoyed it the way it was. Not too long ago on the ballot, we voted down what was described as some type of update you was going to try and do. And I believe you're doing a lot of planning, but yet you don't have approval from the citizens of how much money you're going to get and what they would approve. I just hope you're not wasting a lot of time and public money here, doing a lot of planning that may or may not be needed. I believe it's high time you get some basic questions on the ballot. Ask and see what type of money you need and if you're going to get it. And I certainly hope you keep it to four lanes. It's been a good city here with four lanes. And business has survived what business there has been. You know, you look back at business and you can go back to the old shopping center over there at Lakeside. And you know, there's some stories there that you ought to listen to. A lot of stores put a lot of money in over there at Lakeside and bought all of them bankrupt. You know, you can overbuild and oversupply and not have the buyers. So anyway, I hope you look at this 38th deal, keep it plain, keep it four lanes, and give us citizens a chance to vote on things that you're doing and the money you need.
Thank you Herb. Bob Brazel?
Bob Brazel, 3830 Carr Street. I attended both of the ADU meetings, or if we want to use the proper name as defined in the dictionary, the duplex meetings. Why do we have to have new names for old ideas? Maybe it's to deceive the public? The first meeting was a setup, it wasn't advertised or promoted, few people knew about it, unless they had some reason to promote the idea, they weren't there. I walked out of the second meeting because there were people there who were not at the first meeting and were not given the opportunity to say if they were in favor or opposed duplexes in their neighborhoods. Staff just proceeded to say, "We agreed to this at the last meeting, so let's decide how to build them." I think, I think that 150 or even 300 people out of 31,000 can't give you an idea of what the public wants. I don't think are interested in, I don't think you're interested in the truth, and it surely will not give you cover if you approve ADUs and reduce the property values of many in order to profit a few. The largest investment most people make in their lives is their home. They bought their homes in single-family areas for a reason. Changing the rules after the fact would be unfair and reprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you Bob. Julie Clark. Julie, please give your address, spell your last name.
Julie Clark, 3821 Holland. I think we're all in the same neighborhood and yet we don't know each other. I just found out about this ADU issue, so I'm really just here to listen to the study session to see what you're all going to talk about this evening.
Thank you. And David? Bosley, yes, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's David Bosley, 3821 Holland. Again, my wife Julie and I really just became aware of the ongoing discussion and planning efforts in consideration of modifying our zoning ordinances to allow ADUs. Again, I'd like to hear more what you're considering before making up my own mind. However, I am concerned in that I'm a relative new transplant, only been in Wheat Ridge for 12 years. But I grew up in a suburban slash agrarian neighborhood or community, and that's what drew me to Wheat Ridge, and it's why I hope to remain in Wheat Ridge. And we are fortunate enough, I guess, to live directly adjacent to three rental properties. And I don't see ADUs promoting better growth for Wheat Ridge. I would see, depending on how it's managed, it possibly becoming a detriment to the city. Thank you much.
Thank you. New resident. Sharon Schillerff.
I'm Sharon Schillerff, S-C-H-I-L-L-E-R-E-F-F. I live at 7780 West 38th Avenue, condo number 404. And I am here to give my support to Councilman Urban's proposed idea of the four-lane to 38th Avenue. And I would, am in very much a favor of it becoming a ballot measure. That's it.
Thank you Sharon. Russell Mayer.
My name is Russell L. Mayer, and please put the L in, because my son is Russell L., or Russell Mayer, and my grandson is Russell Mayer. That's the reason I want you to put the L in.
We gotta put the L in, don't forget that.
We live at 3600 Holland Street.
Julie, no.
3600.
Been there since 1952. Really, I've been reading this thing about the dwelling units, and I just really have a question. And my question is about, on page six, about the proposed next step. And what I want to know is, after the people have sat down and drafted regulations and so forth, are we going to have a public meeting on that before it's adopted?
Want to answer that, or you want to wait till the time?
I think it'll be addressed during the presentation. You gonna stick around for the presentation, sir? You gonna stick around for the presentation?
The presentation?
The presentation, are you gonna stay for the presentation? Yeah, okay, I think it'll be, yes. Okay.
Vivas? No. Oh, Vivian.
Are three minutes or no? No?
Yes.
Okay. Reading the, Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. Reading the memorandum regarding subject 38th Avenue, streetscape. The second page, the idea of restriping 38th Avenue was first proposed, 2009, and went on to be restriped in 2012. It was my understanding from attending several meetings and reading several reports that this was a trial, and so I'm not sure in anybody's mind if three, four, five, six years constitutes a trial. Economic development also, page two. The corridor sales tax revenues have increased each year since 2010, aggregating all sales tax-producing businesses from Uppam to Sheridan. And right away that stopped me because it was my understanding that 38th Avenue widening or narrowing, or the business district, whatever we're talking about, was Wadsworth to Uppam, Wadsworth to Marshall, I've heard Uppam to Marshall, I've heard so many different boundaries, but surely we cannot talk about sales tax-producing businesses from Uppam to Sheridan. You are not talking apples to apples when you're talking about the 38th Avenue that we've been concentrating on. So I'd like to get that redone. As a study, then in speed and vehicle volumes, I think both of those speak to just about equal to what they have been, no increase, no decrease, but I'm also asking, have the side streets, Piers for example, oh, there's another one that's just east of the senior home, they're between 44th, okay. I think those need to be studied just as well as the speeds on the side streets, parallel to 38th Avenue. And then, of course, speeds are going to be due to the streets narrowing, which slows down, the congestion which forms from the narrowing, and that it's not really easy to navigate because you've got planters and cars and all sorts of things happening at the same time. I pity a lot of people that choose to drive that street just...
Three seconds.
Okay. I think it's important to, we know why the accidents of 17 to 25 occurred, what type of accidents were they, and then definitely I would support and ask for a vote of the people with a couple of ballot questions on 38th Avenue and not just one. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Voss. Vivian. Britta Fisher.
Good evening, my name's Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I live in District 1 and am also the Executive Director of Local Works. And I wanted to come tonight to say thank you. Thank you first and foremost to our businesses. It's really compelling to see such tremendous sales tax data, to see that 77% increase since 2010, and that's really due to the businesses that have been working hard on 38th Avenue, and I just want to show my appreciation for all of them and to say kudos on that hard work. And also wanted to thank the citizens who've been involved with Create Your 38, and everybody who's had their voice heard, and I really want to thank the city for having so many methods for hearing from people. I've been very impressed by not just the outreach and the engagement, but also the technology, some of the online meetings, such as the new Wadsworth widening meeting that was online. I really think these tools are being noticed by the citizens, and we sure hear it from our local works members. And then finally, since we think events have been a big part of getting people to the corridor, and part of that drawing people to spend their time and money here on our main street in Wheat Ridge, I wanted to make sure I personally invited all of you to come to our Criterium and Brew Fest. The Ridge at 38 Criterium and Brew Fest is this Sunday. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and want to invite all the citizens of Wheat Ridge and beyond to come. We hope to have thousands of people there. Last year, we had 400 racers and a few thousand people there, and we'd love to have an even bigger crowd. We have 12 craft breweries and 25 craft beers there for you to enjoy, so another reason to come spend your dollars and spend your time on Ridge at 38. Thank you.
Thank you. John Genova.
John Genova, 3430 Otis Street, Wheat Ridge. Good evening. Last month, I provided comments regarding Create Your 38 and the outcome of that process. At that juncture, I was very positive at that time, which I and all the participants had invested in the Create Your 38 process, felt it was all really time well spent. I felt like the process was a valid one. I left the study session that evening, but it was prior to the city council's discussion of 38th Avenue. A few days later, I was surprised, surprised to learn that Councilor Urban had submitted a street design for consideration, which he just sketched up himself outside the Create Your 38 process. It shows a four- and five-lane design, which is counter to the Create Your 38 final design solution, the so-called Option A. At a glance, Mr. Urban's design sits on a 72-foot curb width, his four- or five-lane design has five-foot sidewalks, doesn't include the required curb and gutter. It says, "You Create Your People wasted your time." Here, let me show you what you should have been doing, this is the outcome that allegedly should have been born out of that open process. This same process was called into question in an emergency city council meeting, where it was alleged that there was tampering in this process, and this turned out to be unfounded. Now, rumor has it, Option A is being considered as one of three ballot questions to let the electorate pick the final design of the upcoming general, in the upcoming general election. Never mind that the Create Your 38 people voted overwhelmingly to adopt Option A, a complete street retrofit, eight-foot wide sidewalks, four-foot amenity zones, two-and-a-half foot gutter, two 10-foot travel lanes, and one 11-foot turn lane. Mr. Urban's design should not be given any consideration. It was submitted from a privileged position as a city council member, not through the Create Your 38 process. Of note, all three four-lane designs in that process were discarded early on, because one, it wasn't going to fit, two, it goes counter to creating a slower-paced, walkable downtown experience. Some folks are also saying, "Oh, we gotta get this on the ballot this November because X, Y, or Z." However, we have a paper plan at this point, but we need to do our homework first. There's lots of boring project scoping tasks such as surveying, which would really give us hard numbers to work with, so we know which easements are needed, who's going to be impacted, and then engaging those property owners who are potentially impacted to get their buy-in.
Thank you, John. Kim Calomino.
Thank you, Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 470 Dover Street. First on ADUs, I appreciate who have had the opportunity to participate in the two public processes, I found them very informative, as well as the online opportunity that existed afterwards. I would like to encourage council to pursue their discussion of accessory dwelling units for a number of reasons, and to direct staff to draft proposed regulations. I think this provides, it might be small, but it provides one piece of a solution to affordable housing, aging-in-place, multi-generational living, which is increasingly a need as well as a chosen option for a lot of people, so I'd like to see us move that forward. I would suggest that we ask Consolidated Mutual, why they of all water districts think they need to have a separate tab for detached ADUs. That will add significant cost to building an ADU, and I don't believe that it's necessary. On 38th Avenue, I'd like to concur with some of John's comments. We had a great process, I thank you for that process. There was a very strong consensus that came out of that for Package A. It included amenity zones that could actually be used, not just looked at, which you will see in Option A, a staff proposal for a reconstruction option. I don't call tree zone that you can't put benches in and that is not accessible to folks in wheelchairs an amenity zone, it's just something to look at. I also object to a four- or five-lane option that came forward from Mr. Urban, just cut from whole cloth, didn't include public process, takes private property. Again, it's just not, doesn't seem fair, doesn't seem fair if we want to talk about a skewed process and potential impropriety, I think this is an example of that. I would be very concerned, however, if you indeed put multiple ballot questions on 38th, on this fall's ballot. I think you need to be looking at a sales tax package for infrastructure needs around the community, and if you have two, three, 38th Avenue ballot questions and a sales tax question, I think that's a recipe for disaster. I think you'll have confused, angry, and disappointed citizens who will just vote everything down, and we need a win, and we need a win on the sales tax question. I think there's a lot of work that could be done yet, I think there's continued conversations to be had with the businesses. Let's find out what they're willing to do, because in the end, if we pass something on 38th Avenue, you still have the potential for 12 citizens to come forward and blow a hole in the whole thing by demanding a vote on street width. And if you haven't done your talking with them and figured out what they're willing to do, you're going to have that blow up. So I think you have the time, what we have in place is currently working, sales tax, traffic data, all of that supports that, and you can take the time to do some homework. I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Carol Matthews.
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt.
Could you spell your last name?
M-A-T-H-E-W-S.
Thank you.
Now is the time for some truth. Freetridge R. One homeowners, today in the city of Freetridge, you can legally add an addition onto your house or fixture your lower level to facilitate living quarters for grandma, grandma, and grandpa, kids, parents, or caregivers, per Section 26123 of the Freetridge City Codes. Section 26102, the intent and purpose of the zoning code of the city of Freetridge is to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city to ensure a logical growth of various physical elements of the city. Section 26205 R. 1, intent and purpose, this district is established to provide high-quality, safe, quiet, and stable low-density residential neighborhoods, and to prohibit activities of any nature which are incompatible with a low-density residential character. The people here are presenting ADUs not for the purpose of housing grandma or kids, but to repopulate our single-family neighborhoods with multi-resident rental properties. Our houses were built to accommodate two to four cars maximum with off-street parking. Additional, adding additional residents would add additional cars. Our two-lane residential streets would be lined with these cars. Two-way traffic would be eliminated, and fire trucks, ambulances, snowplows would have limited access. The city says, "This will never happen in our neighborhoods. The city will control the construction and occupancy of ADU properties." How's that working now? In nearly every neighborhood in the city, there are rental houses with multi-occupants, cars lining the street, or the front yards gravelled over with parking blocks for many cars belonging to the occupants. Have you called or emailed codes enforcement? How's that worked? It has not eliminated the same problem in our neighborhood for nearly 10 years. Drive down the streets of Denver, once thriving, single-family neighborhoods, on two-lane, tree-lined streets now have cars parked solid along the sidewalks and bars on the windows with rooms-for-rent signs in the front yards. It may be more tax dollars for the city council to spend on special interests, but it's sure not going to secure our property values or promote quality of life in our neighborhoods. I've been told that the new crystal ball for the Freetridge City planners is the article by Urban Land Institute, "Reaching for the Future: Financing for Smaller Communities." But are they listening to the common sense issues, and have they shown the successful things of other cities? In this article, the author offers a few pearls of wisdom. Under revitalizing cities, he says, "Build on existing assets. Identify some strength in the community that can be part of our initial catalyst. What already brings people to the area in a positive way?" According to our city website, suburban atmosphere, close proximity... According to our city website, suburban atmosphere in close proximity to Denver business is our number-one attraction. In 2005, the city of Freetridge commissioned a study for the repositioning...
I'm sorry, if you are going to add time, it is usually, the time is added before the speaker speaks, it's not added on afterward, as in this case, when it appears that the speaker needs more time.
I told Janelle about it before the meeting. I'm sorry. Vivian, would you like to read the rest of my speech? Vivian, would, Vivian, would you like to read the rest of my speech?
Vivian, Vivian, you've... No, it's not. And comment, the rule is actually that you are supposed to sign up before you speak. I have been generous and let people raise their hands when they haven't spoke, but to then add to this, that more time to speak after not signing up and trying to do an addition on top of, I feel...
Excuse me, I signed up on this, and I also, as I said, I, okay. I'll have Vivian complete my speech.
No, Vivian has already spoke.
She also signed, okay. Okay, well, for the rest of you, the study of 2005, which Freetridge paid good money for, stated that we really are digging a hole with more rentals, so...
Ms. Matthews, please be respectful. The next speaker is John Clark. Then we will have to review the rules again, but the rules, as I understand them at this point, is that people are supposed to be signed up to speak, and that time added is arranged beforehand. Are we talking about study session? We have been sitting here all evening long, keeping track of time. We've been sitting here all evening long, keeping track of time, to suddenly divert from that seems completely, everyone else has obeyed the time. Okay. Mr. Clark?
Yes, yes, I'm here, absolutely. Sorry, I had to actually apologize to Carol, because I about ran her over, I forgot where I was in line, I got up to go. So, no ADU talk tonight, taxes maybe next week, I'll come back, but let's just rehash 38th, because we've been talking about it for five years, so why not? So, yeah, about 2012, we talked about a trial, putting a trial out there, and going to do a little road diet and see how that works, so, yeah, six, seven years later, it's still going. I'm not sure if the citizens would, would be very happy if they understood that the city has spent over a million dollars on this trial and subsequent stuff that's happened, and 38th still looks like it does. Because it really doesn't look that good, so. 2014, we had a ballot issue, 2B passed, 60-40. I thought that was kind of the end of it, but I understand, some people said no, for whatever reason. Then we had a citizen survey, scientific citizen survey come out, a year later, same thing, road diet, no. And, you know, take it for what it is, guys, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, you guys decide. But, so, we all came up with Create Your 38th. So you're going to create your 38th and have three, four, five, eight, I've heard 900 people. And they all got together and decided this option A. And I went to the meetings, and I wasn't in favor of it, but 75% of the people wanted option A. They wanted a complete reconstruction, $10 million-plus dollars. So now I'm trying to figure out, after months and months and months of listening to, you have to, you have to, you have to listen to the people and you have to respect the process of Create Your 38th. Majority council is not even respecting that. 75% of the people wanted option A. Now what do we got? No option A. We got a whole nother option. So this is number three in the hit parade, that we didn't listen to 2B, we didn't listen to the citizen survey, and now we're not going to listen to Create Your 38th. I'm not sure where we go from here. Just take 75% of the people that you voted on, Create Your 38th, option A, run it up the flagpole, and let's see where it goes. Put a cost dollar on it and see how many people want to vote for that. Otherwise, let's be done. We've got a lot of other stuff to do in the city. And I just want to be fair, too. And that's why you guys all know that I'm not for option A, and I didn't like the Create Your 38th process. But for me to have to hear that for months, and months and months...
Is time up?
No, 30 seconds. And then come in and hear that we're not even going to, we're not even going to run option A up to the people and vote on it? That's not fair. And if you want to talk about fair in Mr. Urban's design, his privileged position of sitting on council, I would say that Denise Hoppy has a privileged position of sitting on council and owning a property on 38th. So can we not listen to anything she has to say? I mean, thanks, guys. I'll be back next week to talk about taxes.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, may I...
Mr. Matthews.
...speak, please. I need to give you a little bit of an apology here because when I went down further in the council rules, under study sessions specifically, it does state, item two, public comment will be allowed at the beginning of a study session for only those items on the agenda, and each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes. So I need to apologize for that because I was thinking of the regular council meeting rules for agendas. So, sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry. That's it. Okay, let's move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Administrative Services Director Heather Geier and our sales tax supervisor Kathy Franklin going to give you just a very quick summary of this cleanup that we need to make in our code concerning medical marijuana testing licensing. This was brought on by some changes at the state level.
So the issue is that late in 2015, the governor signed into law a bill, SB 15-260, which requires testing of medical marijuana beginning in July this year. Colorado also adopted House Bill 161064, which is attachment two in this package, last April that authorizes local licensing of medical marijuana testing facilities. So we're all lined up for that. In preparation for required medical marijuana testing, retail testing facilities are permitted by the Colorado Marijuana Enforcement Division to apply for the state medical marijuana testing facility license. And normally, the Marijuana Enforcement Division requires applicants to provide proof of having applied for a local marijuana-related license at the time that they submit their state application. However, because of the short turnaround of this new law, applicants are permitted to submit a Colorado application, provided there is proof that the locality is in the process of adopting an ordinance to license medical marijuana testing. So currently, our ordinance allows retail marijuana testing, the processes are the same. It's restricted to C1 and IE-zoned areas. We do not have anything in our code currently addressing medical marijuana testing, so what we're seeking here is to get a go-ahead for that. There would be minimal impact. We have one retail marijuana testing facility right now, Gobi Analytical, and that's out at 12295 West 48th Avenue in Unit C. And that's owned by Peter and Buren Jargal Peron. And they came in on April 22nd, seeking to pursue medical marijuana testing, and they want state and local licensing. They have submitted an application to the Marijuana Enforcement Division. And we've also received three calls from other parties that are interested in establishing medical marijuana testing facilities for the city. So to consider, both retail and medical marijuana testing processes involve transporting marijuana and marijuana product samples from the vendors to the testing facilities. At testing facilities, retail or medical marijuana or marijuana products may be stored for a few days prior to being tested. The purpose of the testing is to determine if marijuana and marijuana products conform with the state of Colorado's specifications for pesticides, solvents, molds, microbes, and potency. Testing is performed in laboratories with controlled access as required by the Marijuana Enforcement Division rules, and using methods including liquefying, which is called high-pressure liquid chromatography, or vaporizing, which is gas chromatography. So small amounts of marijuana or marijuana products are analyzed in those manners in enclosed analytical equipment. So staff recommends to go ahead and authorize the licensing of medical marijuana testing facilities in the city, and the licensing of co-located medical marijuana and retail marijuana testing facilities. The other option, of course, is to make no change and only have the retail marijuana testing, or to ban some or all marijuana testing facilities, put limitations on them, or consider some other options that may result from outside input.
Okay, some discussion, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my overarching concern as it relates to the city licensing this specific activity of testing is the perception as though, because the city is licensing the specific activity of testing, the government is then somehow providing that credibility of the activity of testing by the action of us licensing the testing facility. Even though we're only licensing them as a business, I wonder if there's any kind of disclaimer or some way to differentiate the licensing the city is providing is that as a business and not necessarily, we're not providing any veracity or oversight or engagement with these entities as it relates to their testing procedures or their oversight by any means, and whether their testing is good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's a good point. That would be true of any business license. We don't, you know, it doesn't guarantee any standardization of what they're providing as a product. And we do, just so you know, I'm not sure if you caught this, we do currently provide licensing for retail testing facilities. So we are already doing that. But I don't know if there's a way we could, on this specific license, provide another disclaimer of such. But I don't know if our licenses provide a disclaimer already that say we don't, you know, we don't support or necessarily don't support what the product's being sold, or, you know?
It's more just knowing that, when you see as though a government is licensing an entity and that entity is then testing a consumer product, it appears as though this governmental entity is somehow endorsing that testing enterprise or activity. And I just want to make sure that that's not the case, that we might be approving their commercial activity, but we're not necessarily approving their testing SOP or some other kind of process. And maybe that's too...
Yeah, Mr. Dahl was going to be here this evening for this discussion. I think he's got stuck in the weather traffic. But that's something we could ask, maybe when he comes even tonight, or if council decides to bring this forward on first reading, we could have that information included, if there's some type of disclaimer that, or what a business license does and doesn't do in general.
I'm just looking at one of the whereas clauses in the draft ordinance, and it says, whereas the council further finds the operation of marijuana testing facilities in general promotes the public health, safety, and welfare by promoting, or providing objective evaluation and data concerning the potency, immaturity, and content of marijuana and marijuana products, including potential presence of harmful solvents and contaminants. So by that whereas clause, we're somehow sort of implying that these entities will be performing these functions.
And I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, the testing must follow the state guidelines or for the testing, so I...
Yes, it's a highly regulated portion of the marijuana industry.
Sure, sure. And I just want to make sure that people know that we're not, even though that is heavily regulated, we're not involved with that.
Yeah, I certainly understand your concern.
Ken, Ken's got something. There's, from the act that was adopted.
Yeah, looking at the act language, and it says in one of the first sections, powers and duties of the state licensing authority. One, A, establishing a medical marijuana and medical marijuana-infused projects independent testing and certification program for medical marijuana licensees within an implementation timeframe, requiring licensees to test medical marijuana to ensure at a minimum that products sold for human consumption do not contain contaminants that are injurious to health and ensure correct labeling. And it goes on, so perhaps there's a way to cross-reference that in a whereas statement that makes it clear what the state's role is.
Right, I just want to make sure the city of Freetridge is known to be licensing the commercial enterprise, so to speak, not necessarily the testing activities of the entity.
Sure, okay.
Other discussion or questions, because we have some options in here as to whether to ban testing facilities, put limitations on the facilities, et cetera. So I'm wondering if council has any thoughts or questions about that. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll make a comment that the purpose and role of these testing facilities is to make sure that the marijuana or marijuana products are not contaminated with pesticides. I can't see, I can't really understand why we would be against making sure that people are getting pure product.
As well as the, yeah, various items around marijuana product. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
I know in some of the options, I know that this is already allowed for retail. I would think that we'd want to set up kind of the co-location option, just so, I mean, we're not, you know, because I know we've set a specific number within a radius, and I know they say that's transporting this to be tested. I'd rather just, if it's going to be done, it's going to be a co-location type of situation in that area and not set it in other areas, would be my thought. And I do agree with Mr. Urban that it kind of does sound like council, like we've set up some kind of a process that we're going to make sure that it's correct, you know, that it's the operations or testing facilities, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd rather refer to the state statute to inner whereas. But I would almost, if we do it, we need to, I would support the co-location.
Okay, so you would like it very similar to our current regulations around sale of...
It would just be in that location.
It would be limited to that location, not another location, but it's a testing facility now. Okay, does everybody understand that? Okay, good. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Justice.
Clarification on that. I mean, the testing facilities need to be operated independently from a MIP or from a retail or grow facility. And we only have the one existing testing facility. So if we placed the requirement on co-location, then we couldn't have any, unless there were a new retail establishment, you couldn't have a new medical testing facility. Does that make sense? They'd have to open both. If you opened a new retail, then you, if I hear what you're suggesting, then that would give someone the right to open a new medical testing facility. Because we only have the one right now, and they do just retail.
Right, so I guess my question would be, though, if I have the marijuana, let's say Kipling and the one there on 26th or 29th, whatever, and they decided to do testing there...
They can't.
They can't. So they can't do it in the same location.
Has to be independent from any of the other actual producers.
Oh, so when the co-location option, I guess I misunderstood the co-location operation then, I guess.
Co-location with a retail testing facility. So a retail and a marijuana testing facility can locate together, co-locate, retail and medical in one location.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
Has nothing to do with the sales or the production.
Testing and the retail, it's...
Just testing. Co-location of the testing of the two types, retail and medical.
A second. Are you comfortable?
Well, I guess then my question with that is another discussion item, and maybe I missed it in here, is, because I saw that and was like, okay, that's, okay, that's fine. But I guess my question on that is, is would that fall within our five that we've allowed? And if that's the case, then we wouldn't be having any of these testing type of situations because we've already got the five that we've permitted as a city, and we're done.
We don't cap the testing facilities, so there could be, right now, you don't cap them. So they're only in certain zone districts, I believe, but there's no cap on testing facilities. We only have the...
So, yeah, that's a good clarification.
Are you good? Ms. Hoppy.
Yeah, so that was my question was, you know, do we, does it already fall into the limit that we've set of the number of places? So if it doesn't, then is that something that maybe we should look at is a limit? And I'm, if they're already testing retail marijuana, then they might as well test the medical marijuana at the same place. But how many of these testing facilities do we really want in our community, I guess is my next question.
I got Mr. Pond over here.
I'll just restate a couple of comments that I think we, that I had a year or two ago when we were discussing these testing locations. And I do think that they serve a positive purpose. They are not distributing product. The density or number of these, in my mind, is less of an issue. These are laboratory businesses that bring, you know, high-paying jobs and important, you know, important functions in industrial or commercial, you know, locations, I believe it's industrial. But, you know, I think at the time, there was a broad discussion about that, and my position was and is, that a limit on those was not what we were hearing as an issue through much of the conversation here in council chambers or through emails. So again, I think it's, you know, this is an important aspect, I think, to make sure that the, you know, that the infrastructure throughout the state frankly has good testing. And I don't think there's a reason for us to limit that, you know, for any reason. These aren't forward-facing or create any kind of impact, any differently than any other laboratory business would.
If I could just add on to that real quick, just as a reminder, it's definitely certainly an option for council to look at a cap. But as the memo says, we only, we currently have one in the city, and we did have three, I believe, at one point. So a couple have already closed down. So it hasn't, they haven't proliferated under the retail testing. I don't see why that would necessarily under a medical, if we added medical to it. But, you know, you never know, it always could. And what zone district is it? I can't remember, is it?
C1 and IE.
C1 and IE, okay.
So, more information has been revealed. Do I have another question here? Nope. All right, so what we need to decide, let's see, we have to comply with state law, and go ahead.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing, unless I'm not, is to bring forward an ordinance to allow testing in medical marijuana facilities and co-locate. No caps at this point?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy, Heather.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sorry, Patrick. In that consensus, can you look at adding into the whereas where we cross-reference to the act?
Yes, definitely. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Johnston, are you ready for accessory dwelling units?
I am, thank you, Mayor. We're back in front of you, it's been just about six months since we last were, maybe even a little more, in front of you to talk about accessory dwelling units. We got your okay and direction back in late November of last year to, really to start the process of looking into whether ADUs, accessory dwelling units... to start the process of looking into whether ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are a good fit for our community. Certainly, they are allowed in different forms and fashions in some other communities around the metro area. So it's just a policy topic that we wanted to bring in front of you. And it's one that's discussed in a few other policy documents that have been adopted by the city over the years. And I won't dwell on that, but that's all in your staff report, staff memo for reference. So again, our discussion with you back in November really, in our mind, was a very preliminary one. There wasn't a lot of substantive back and forth on the topic. It was really just your authorization to go out and initiate a public process, which we've done. And so this is really our opportunity to take that next step and tell you what we think we've learned from that public process over two public workshops that were held back in April and May. We did want to, we think, we hope, get good notice out for the meeting. So we did kind of defer that public process in order to be able to get summary article and notice of the two meeting dates and a connections newsletter that was mailed to all households back in the week of March 15th. And then subsequently, we had the two public meetings that were held in council chambers in April 12th and May 10th, I want to say. And we'll talk to you mostly tonight about what the results of those two meetings were. Just a little bit of background, it's a new topic, I think, for a lot of people, perhaps yourself included, perhaps us included. Lisa Ritchie next to me here has been really the staff person in terms of doing the research and taking the lead at the public meetings as well. So thank you for being here tonight. And we'll lean on you for more detailed questions for sure. So they can take a variety of forms. They're intended very much so to be a secondary residential unit, not the same as a duplex or an attached second unit or two primary units. There are ways to control that, but it's clear that they're intended to be secondary to the primary, we would propose, single-family use of the rest of the property. So we wouldn't propose that an ADU be allowed on anything other than an existing single-family lot. We can talk about that more if you have questions. So there's a variety of different regulatory things you can put in place to make sure that they feel secondary to the principal single-family use of the property. In some cases, they occur in basements by finishing a basement. In some cases, they may be on top of a garage. They could be an independent accessory structure somewhere on the lot. But clearly, want to have them have independent housekeeping facilities as part of kind of the core function. So in that sense, they do function like a dwelling. They are indeed independent from the main house. They would typically be managed in some manner and limited in some manner in terms of who can occupy it and how many can occupy it, right? So we've had some discussions, certainly through the public process, about, you know, would one or both of the units be occupied by the property owner, right? And we would certainly advocate for that. We would advocate that probably one, not both, but certainly we think that's very important. And we've also certainly heard and would recommend this, that the number of occupants be limited in some fashion. So it's not, you know, another four people that are living on the property and essentially you have what feels like two units. So those are some of the important regulatory environments. So that's just a real brief summary. We can get into that more if the direction of council is to move forward. As I mentioned earlier, most of our surrounding jurisdictions, and this is a real anecdotal summary, but Denver, Lakewood, Arvada, Jefferson County all allow them in some form or fashion. And some of those regulations have been in place for a number of years and some are more recent. I think Lakewood's has just been in place for about three years. And Jefferson County, in the last year or year and a half, amended the regulations for, in a couple of specific ways. And we can talk about that as well. I think, as was alluded to by some of the speakers, I mean, there's a variety of reasons that, from a policy perspective, that you might want to consider allowing ADUs, accessory dwelling units, issues of affordability, issues of housing diversity, which we're certainly trying to achieve in this community, the needs of an aging community, whether that be aging in place or creating an opportunity for a multi-generational household that works well for a variety of reasons for some families. Boomerang kids are a thing that some people deal with, and this is something that could accommodate that. It could simply be for out-of-town guests or for your own personal purposes to have a separate space that you want to use for perhaps a hobby or something like that. But you want to have additional facilities in it, like the kitchen. So with that kind of as a brief background, we provided more information in the memo, but I think we'd just like to jump into what we heard during these two public outreach sessions that occurred on April 12th and May 10th. As was noted earlier, the meetings did build upon one each other, and that was by design. The April, the first meeting was well-tended. There were about 75 people in the audience, which we felt was a good turnout. And it was really, the purpose of that was really twofold. One, very much educational, to make sure we kind of set up a level playing field in terms of what the topic is and what these things are or could be. And then two, on a very basic level, kind of gauge the community's interest, or at least the participants at the meeting's interest in having ADUs as an option in the city. We conducted a clicker survey, much like we did in the Create Your 38 process, using our new high-tech technology for surveying at these meetings. And just a few highlights, we included all of the data from the results of that survey in your packets, as well as an online survey that was conducted subsequent to the meeting as well. Surprisingly, at least to me, about 75% of the respondents that participated in those two processes, and that's a rough number, supported allowing ADUs in some form or fashion. Even more surprising to me was that, I think it was at the meeting versus the online survey, that about 50% indicated that they in fact would be indicated in having one at some point in the future. Whether that plays out, I think it's very hard to tell. We'll go through a little bit of the numbers of what other communities are experiencing in terms of numbers. And it's not terribly significant, at least our opinion. And the reason for having them really varied, whether it was, you know, boomerang kids or a rental income property, which could be an option, aging parents, I think the answers to that question really spreads, span the gamut of responses. And so the second meeting did dive deeper on the topic. And to answer a question that came up in some of the public comments, we didn't ask that kind of core question of, are you interested in ADUs? The purpose of the meeting, for better or worse, was really to build on the results of the first meeting, where we heard people generally seemed to be fairly interested. So we wanted this focus time on if you're interested in having ADUs in these communities. And that's still a question for you all to give us direction on, of course. But what would those look like? What important, what things would be important to regulate? And again, a few takeaways from that meeting. And also, we had the same online survey after that meeting as well. So an additional opportunity for the public to give us their feedback. And again, just a few highlights, but some degree of architectural compatibility was important. Our sense was, based on the responses, not too rigid, but some level of architectural compatibility. And there's a variety of ways that you can address that would be important. A height limitation was important, and we got a variety of responses on that. But as I think most of you are aware, the city generally has a maximum building height of 35 feet for residential structures, which is essentially three-story construction. We have further limitations in our code on accessory structures, and those are kind of at the exact opposite extreme. They can be quite limiting. So it could be, for further discussion, that somewhere in between would be important spot to hit in terms of what building height would be appropriate. And then some level of parking regulation. You know, our community certainly varies from having narrow streets with no on-street parking to having, you know, wider street with parking on both sides of the street. And then individual lots vary, right? I mean, you may have a garage and four off-street parking spaces, or you may not have much at all. So I think what we heard is some sort of a contextual solution that looks at the specifics of the neighborhood and the specifics of the property as to what would be an appropriate amount of parking to be required within ADU. Keeping in mind also that it's the intent to have some sort of a limitation on occupancy. So those two together, we think we can find a good balance. As I mentioned, we have done a real, just kind of cursory review of some of our adjacent communities. No huge, I guess, lessons learned. One lesson that was learned from Jefferson County, I mentioned that they recently updated their regulations. One of the principal driving factors for that update was the fact that they had put in place, when they originally adopted the regulations, about 10 or so years ago, they had put in a requirement with a deed restriction that said that both units had to be occupied by members of the family, right? And what they found and what they heard was that that was quite a limiting factor, that, you know, if you're going to make that kind of investment in a property and then, you know, potentially have to finance it or potentially have to sell it at some point in the future, that that's a pretty cumbersome deed restriction that would make it challenging to resell the property. It's neither good nor bad, but it's just kind of a reality. If you want to allow ADUs, what we're hearing from Jefferson County and others is that that double limitation in occupancy probably means you're not going to see very many of these, if any. And that's certainly what Jefferson County experienced. In terms of volume, Arvada has had regulations in place for the longest time, about a dozen years. And they've had actually 103 ADUs that have been approved, actually, in the seven years that they've been allowed. So that's a, you know, it's a fairly significant number. Of course, they're a community of more like 125,000 people and bigger and larger affect scale.
1%?
Right. Lakewood has had six in the three years that they've had their regulations on the book. And Jefferson County, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they've definitely seen a little uptick since they changed the regulations regarding that restricting the occupancy, owner occupancy, to at least one of the units as opposed to both. So again, our intent tonight is not necessarily to dive deep into the substantive discussion of how you would regulate these. We're glad to answer questions and have some of that conversation, if that's your desire. But I think we view the first step is just to say, at this point in the process, we've had two public meetings, we've gotten good participation. I'm not sure I mentioned, but the second meeting, we had about 80 people. So again, good participation. About half of those people had been to the first meeting and half had not. So that's really our intent tonight. There was a question earlier in the comments about what the public process would be moving forward, and certainly want to answer that. We're very early in the process. I think we were pleased with the turnout and the online survey participation, but there's more work to be done in terms of what this actually would look like for our community, if that's your direction. So we'd be anticipating, taking this probably next, if that's your direction, to Planning Commission for a study session, which is obviously a public meeting. And then based on draft set of regulations that comes out of them, their discussion, bringing it back to you for a more substantive discussion on a regulatory framework for this. And then, of course, for any ordinance like this that would amend our zoning code, we would have public hearings on the ordinance, again, before both Planning Commission and City Council. So there'd be, what we're proposing is that there'd be four additional opportunities for public comment in those venues. We don't think, it makes a lot of sense in our mind to do additional public workshops, which are more informal. We feel like we got really good input and participation and don't think if we did, went out and did that again, that we'd have a whole lot of new things to say to people and wouldn't necessarily get as great a participation potentially, just because we've already done one round.
So we've reached the point, it sounds like we're early in the process still, and we've reached the point where council decides whether they want to move forward more, so the staff could draft possible regulations, Planning Commission as well. So questions or not?
Or not.
Yes.
So I just have, I think, you know, all my questions, I think, were digging more into details. So, you know, some of my questions are, I mean, I completely understand this if it was, you know, my elderly father and I need a space for him in my house, or, you know, that type of thing, and I'm living there. You know, I guess a lot of my concern, and again, this is probably digging into the details, is how, you know, how are we going to enforce that? Like, how do we know that I live there and that dad lives in the back? I mean, I think that's part of my concern, is in this process, is going to, I mean, how do you monitor it? That it's not, I own the property and I just split it in two and I'm renting both. So.
We've certainly thought about that. And presumably, and, you know, I'm not going to say that there aren't any illegal dwellings out there throughout the community. In our mind, that's a really, a second question and one that we deal with on a not infrequent basis. And it really have to look at the specific facts as they play out, given the fact that a lot of those units have the potential to predate when we were a city. So they're complicated issues. So we don't think those two issues are directly related. So moving forward, if someone were to want to add an ADU, whether that would be in a new unit above a garage in a basement, the three examples we've kind of been using, it would require a building permit. And we would propose that as part of that building permit, two things happen. Number one, they have to record a deed restriction that requires that at least one of the units is occupied by the owner of the property. We wouldn't necessarily propose which one, because it could make sense for the owner to move into the smaller one and have maybe their kids and their family move into the house and maintain the property. And, you know, maybe in the perfect world, the neighborhood benefits are a better maintained yard. Who knows? But we think that deed restrictions is critical, no doubt. And that gets recorded with Jefferson County. We would also propose to kind of buttress that with some sort of a registration program. So also, as part of that building permit, before they get a certificate of occupancy, they register, right? So when they register, we know how it's going to be managed, right? Who's going to be in which unit? We could have an annual re-up, right, where they have to re-register and say, so who's living in each unit right now, right? Acknowledging that one of those could be a rental unit, right? I mean, it could be someone that's not family, at least in the framework that we're proposing. But that's really how we're proposing to manage it, is that if we have a code enforcement issue, for example, of the property owner not managing it well, we actually have a lot more information than we do on a normal single-family house that may be rented, right? Where we don't know who that renter might be. The owner may be out of state or at least out of Wheat Ridge. So I'm not proposing that that's going to be perfect. I mean, any kind of a regulatory environment like that has its hiccups. But we think we could put in place a registration program and a deed restriction that gave us quite a bit of information that would help us manage ADUs.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Couple of things. One thing we should acknowledge about the survey is that the survey was taken by, it's a survey of people who are self-selected because they have an interest to begin with. So this doesn't really represent citizens as a whole as much as just people who are specifically interested in this topic. The second thing is, I have a question. One of the, in your memo, options included limits on the number of ADUs permitted, and another option would be to enact a use by right. Aren't those mutually exclusive?
There's a couple of things. We, I think we would recommend that if we can set up a good regulatory environment that has good rules regarding architectural compatibility, registration program, parking requirements, that we don't necessarily see a reason to make these a conditional use per, or special use permit, that's more of a discretionary review. So that would be our suggestion. Separate from that, we would recommend that the occupancy, in terms of the number of people that could occupy, and it might be different for different sized ADUs, or there could be some different context there, but there'd be some cap on how many people can occupy an ADU.
And that's my next thing. In District 3, we have a situation where a family is living in a camper trailer in the back of someone's house. And I asked code enforcement to go out there and observing constitutional protections, they haven't been able to enforce any code. So it would be very important to me to have strong means to enforce the aspects that we're trying to limit here. And I don't think it is sufficient just to be able to enforce it when the property is sold. You know, we have to have some immediate way.
Ongoing.
Yeah, to make this. And I've thought about this a lot. I have a list of things I'd like to see in this if we proceed, and I'll send that to you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
So for the, for the purpose of the audience that's here that doesn't have the memo sitting in front of them, and for the people that are listening, the broad strokes that you guys are looking at, and let me know if I missed something. So occupancy, you guys are looking for it to be one of the place, one of the two units occupied by the landowner. The number of people, limiting the number of people, the, having a registration program, finding my highlights here, making sure that it's architecturally compatible, minimizing the size, so having limits on the size. Unless it's over a garage, it wouldn't be two stories. Is that kind of what I was looking at? Okay. It would have to be less than 35 feet. And you're looking at drilling down the parking a little bit more, where it would be on a case-by-case basis, where some places they would have to have off-street parking and some places it could be on-street parking, or?
Yes. I mean, we don't know exactly what that looks like. I think we just, we think there's some opportunities to treat properties differently based on the street characteristics and the availability of on-street parking and the off-street, the existing off-street parking characteristics.
And then the allowed size, you guys are looking at perhaps a maximum lot coverage for a limitation?
Correct. And, you know, we already have maximum lot coverages for all of our And, you know, we already have maximum lot coverages for all of our residential zoning districts, and I think it would just be a question of whether that just stays in place or if it goes up slightly in the case when you have an ADU.
Great. And then the zoning districts that would only be allowed in a single-family home or a mixed-use neighborhood, but not if there's already a duplex or a multifamily?
Correct.
On, on the property.
On the property.
Right.
So then, and then my only next question, and this would be something that you guys could do along with like the registration piece, but with the popularity of Airbnbs, and I know this was brought up, that there, you know, likely it could end up being a, yeah, well, a lot of, just a lot of, you know, hotel-type uses, which, to be really honest, we don't have really nice hotel-type uses. So like if my parents are coming to visit and I don't have room in my house, then they're, you know, typically in downtown. And so while that would be, while that would be maybe good for our community, to be able to have our family members be able to stay near us if we don't have our own ADU, there are like different lodging taxes and such that go along with that. So how would we, if, if someone is registered and they come in and they say, we're, you know, listing it on Airbnb and, you know, it's on a pretty regular basis and it's pretty booked, how are we going to look at maybe regulating that?
And, and we've certainly been monitoring kind of the general shared housing phenomenon and how it's manifesting itself in Wheat Ridge. And it, you know, has increased. You know, certainly there are arguments that could be made that they should be paying lodger's tax, there's a variety of other potential kind of regulatory concerns that we would have. I think we're at a juncture here now that we, we continue to monitor it. It's something we're going to eventually have to take a look at and say, what does that look like for Wheat Ridge? In our observation of other people's tackling this issue, it hasn't been easy. And there's kind of a variety of different perspectives on, you know, whether people think it's desirable, not desirable, under what circumstances. So I guess from our perspective, it just hasn't quite reached the, the point where we need to jump in there. But certainly ADUs, knowing that one unit could be not owner-occupied, could be used in that manner without us doing additional enforcement, which we're not doing at this point.
So, I mean, maybe we could consider as part of the registration program, if sixty percent of the time the unit is being used as a, as an Airbnb, that, you know, a threshold, if it's sixty percent, or if it's thirty percent, or if it's seventy-five percent, specifically if they're coming in and having to reregister every year, then that would be some questions that we could ask and then we could maybe look at doing some regulations around that, once we set a threshold?
Yeah, and we, I think we could take it even, maybe if I heard what you said, one step further, which is, as part of the registration program, we could potentially explicitly get them to acknowledge that they're going to occupy it in compliance with the city's regulations when it comes to renting residential units, which, there's a variety of different sections of our code that deal with that topic, so it's not an easy enforcement action right now. But we require rental properties to be rented for a minimum term of thirty days as a separate kind of unit. So we could potentially, as part of that registration program, have them acknowledge that if it's going to be occupied by someone outside the family, that that's the minimum term that they'll have. So it's a more traditional resident rental.
I think, well, I think you were, had your arm up earlier, I think, Mr. Ann.
So what is the, can you confirm the height restriction? Is it twenty or twenty-five feet for ADU?
We haven't come up with a recommendation yet.
We haven't yet?
I think the consensus that we heard from the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong here, Lisa, was that one story if it's a new unit and then two stories if it's potentially a unit over a garage. And so we, we may associate that with a height in the recommendation as well then. But we haven't gotten there, we just haven't gotten that far along.
At that point, okay. I have quite a few questions. Let me just ask another one here. How are we going to handle those, I guess, those folks who have been using or have ADUs now that are illegal? How are we going to handle that in the future? Are we going to have like an amnesty program? Are we going to, how are, what thoughts do you have on that?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned it briefly earlier, you know, we, we've become aware periodically of people that are occupying a back shed or a second unit on a property. And we really, it's really fact-based in terms of what is the history on that property? Does it have a water tap? Did it have evidence of a building permit at some point in the past? Does it have separate utilities? We kind of look at that information on balance and say, can some sort of a reasonable kind of defense be made by that property owner that this is a legal unit, that in some way the city or the county, when we were in a city, you know, endorsed it in some official way? So if there are compelling facts in that regard, we take those into consideration. If there aren't compelling facts and the zoning on the property doesn't allow a second dwelling, if it's just a, say, a single-family residential neighborhood, or it's not a big enough lot in a multifamily to have two units, say, then we tell them that it's not a legal unit and we seek enforcement action. So it really is case by case. If it truly is just an illegal unit, and I, I mean, I can tell you several instances of when we've had to figure that out and give people information that they don't particularly like, which is that is not a legal unit and you actually have to decommission it and you can use it as an accessory structure and that's it. We only do that when it's pretty clear that it, they never went through any kind of official process to make it a legal unit. There are other instances where, you know, it's, it's been around for twenty years, it appears, they have electric, separate electrical and gas, maybe they don't have water, but they've got separate gas meters, the post office recognizes it, and we may say, we're going to say that's a legally non-conformant unit and, or it depends on the situation, but a legal unit, we're not going to make you, just decommission it. So it really is case by case.
Okay, because my concern is?
So we're not proposing an amnesty program. I mean, if someone could come in and say, I've got an existing unit that looks an awful lot like what your ordinance anticipates for a new ADU, and they could come in and make that justification and comply with the new requirements, I guess to that extent, it could become an amnesty program. But we're not specifically going out to say, oh, and by the way, we want to kind of figure that, that whole issue out with existing units.
Okay, so I was trying to figure out, how are we going to handle that in the future? The other thing is, is we have a difficult enough time with code enforcement, with weeds, different things like that, trying to enforce those. I'm, I'm just really concerned, how are, how are we going to enforce this? How are we going to make sure if we get a call that we can be there, we can follow through on it? Those are one of my concerns. Also, what I would like, because this is a really big commitment and a big decision for our community, is I would like more workshops. I know you, you just said that you weren't looking at doing any more of those, you were doing some meetings, but I would like more public outreach and more workshops and to get more input. I really do. I don't think a hundred and fifty, you know, folks out of thirty-one thousand really represents even a majority of our citizens.
Sure, sure.
So if we could do some more of those, I would feel better about that.
And I think it's, it's more just the form. I mean, that's, that's for you guys to give us direction, but, I mean, we're kind of following a process like we typically would for a zoning code amendment. You know, when we did all the mixed-use districts in the city, right? We had typically about two public workshops where it was just kind of an open forum. We got input on what people thought, you know, those regulations should look like. And then we drafted regulations and went through that Planning Commission, City Council hearing process. So we're really trying to model this just off, off, we're not trying to not involve the public. I mean, again, there'd be four additional opportunities in, in a public meeting, let alone if we did any other kind of web-based input options as well, we haven't talked about that. So certainly plenty of more public input is our hope and intent. We're just not sure what additional kind of public workshops would look like, drafting what is going to be a very detailed and technical regulatory document in terms of zoning code language. That's just a challenging thing to kind of have a public meeting talking about code writing, essentially.
And maybe it's not so much about code writing, but more about, do you support, you know, do you support this? It's real simple. Do you support ADUs? If you do, why? Just to do more public outreach is what I would like to see, and just get more of that input. It's a big, it's a big decision.
Sure.
Ken, would it be possible that after?
I would, you know, we could do more surveys online, we could maybe do, well, yeah, we could do one per district too, or, you know, do it on a Saturday instead of a, what were they, on Tuesday evenings?
I think so.
Well, Ken, is it possible, after you've drafted some regulations, we've moved down the road a pace a little bit, to where that when you do, you know, whatever next public might be by district, that there's more information? Originally, we were looking for, you know, is this, is this even have a chance of a fly or not? So we've gotten that far. And perhaps there are more explanation, which we have determined through, as you go forward and create regulations, so that there's information to give to the public as to, because there's going to be a lot of fears and we want to be able to relieve those fears.
Well, and more than just the information, it's getting the input from the citizens. I mean, we can give them all the information in the world, but if we're not going to listen to their input and take it in so I can make a, a good decision, that's what I would like. I know it's tough, but, you know, I, I'm looking at you right now and I know it's like, oh, God, how do we do this?
It's just we're going to be drafting very technical setback code language, that I'm just questioning whether the public generally is going to be terribly interested in looking at the difference between the twelve-foot setback and the fifteen-foot setback.
Well, maybe they are. I don't know. Maybe they are interested.
Give me Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, I'd like your input.
I would add on to that, but I think if we could just talk about logistic type of things. I think that's what folks are concerned about, even when you hear them talking today. I mean, what's your feedback if we do, you know, require that the owner of the property remains on the property? Because I think that does address what the yard looks like and those types of things, because I think people who own their homes tend to take care of their homes. So if that owner is still on site, that might relieve somebody's fear or they could provide some feedback. And, you know, I think if we could just talk about not as much technical setbacks and that type of thing, but this is what it would look like, this is what we would require, this is, and get feedback from that, once it's all kind of?
We could probably distill that down into maybe an online survey or something.
Yeah, or Q and A, or?
Just something to, to get more information.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to have to be a point, at some point, where you guys need to make a decision.
Sure.
And, I mean, you know, we're going to talk about Thirty-Eighth Avenue next.
Right, sure, but for me, you know, a hundred and fifty people isn't enough.
Yeah, no, I get, I understand. No, I totally understand, but, you know, I guess we just need direction on what is going to be enough. And, you know, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, we're getting complaints that this is your five, six, I mean, people said tonight. And I, I think it just needs to be a structured process so that we're not setting you guys up for failure. And, I mean, if it's something you don't want to move forward with, that's, we're asking that tonight. And if you do, we can, we'll look at additional public outreach and, but distill down to a, a point where it makes sense for the common population so that they understand and, and can provide valuable feedback so that it helps you make a decision.
Right, I just would like more public outreach, more public comment.
No, I understand.
So I can make a valid decision.
I understand.
Would it be like some minstrels or stuff?
Yeah.
As we had before, you know, is it a, you know? All right.
Surveys, surveys are great, but I would like one-on-one group conversations so that they can ask questions. It's always great to listen and answer their questions.
Yeah.
That's what I would support.
And we can do that. We can do that.
Do we have some more discussion and then we can, let's see, I think Mr. Matthews would be next.
Thank you. This, this issue kind of ties into something that I had looked at when I was first guy elected, because my district has a lot of rental. And we have a lot of rental enforcement problems already. But let me get there in a little bit of a bit piece here. I think it bears repeating this again. And we acknowledged this in our zoning codes to start with, for an R1-zoned residential area. Intent and purpose, I'm going to repeat this, the district is established to provide high-quality, safe, quiet, and stable low-density residential neighborhoods, and to prohibit activities of any nature which are incompatible with the low-density residential character. Everyone that bought a house, I'll say everyone, I'm sure most people did, bought a house in an R1 neighborhood because that is the living circumstance they wanted to raise their family in. If they wanted a duplex, they would have purchased a duplex. And I think how we pull that rug out from under all those people is just beyond me for right now. In line with that, we can't enforce the rental and occupancy and number of people and whose families and whatever that are in our rentals right now. How are we ever going to enforce this? I mean, it's nice to say, well, make regulations, but they have to be enforceable. And that's an issue right now, because the people can just say, oh, that's my brother, and our code's important, get off my property, that's my brother, and the code's enforcement officers have to walk away. They, you know, it's almost impossible to get some kind of a court order or warrant in order to actual verify. And code's enforcement folks, and they're good people, they just, you know, if the guy says, that's my brother, they just, all the code's enforcement people can tell you is, well, we can't force them to take a DNA test. I mean, we've got situations, I've got them throughout my district, where duplexes, duplexes have been changed into fourplexes. And we're impotent on doing anything about it. What they say, you know, the owner or the, or the guy that's at the front door says, get off my property, code enforcement guy has to walk out to the sidewalk and say, oh, well. Bnbs, we say we can't enforce them. We don't know that they're really Bnbs. You can go on the internet and the guy's got an address and an advertised price to rent his room for the night. We can't enforce it. So if anything goes forward, we're putting the cart before the horse, there better be some actually enforceable codes written up that we know we can enforce, and it's the double, code enforcement can enforce them. I mean, right now, we've got codes on the books, but they're just worthless. If someone wants to lie to you and say, that's my brother, he's part of my family, that's it. People bought R1 houses because that's the environment they wanted. Plus, we already know that we have a plethora of rental properties in the city. And I've been told, you know, I've asked, what's the difference between if a guy builds an ADU in the backyard, what's, or attaches an ADU in his backyard to his house, what's the difference between that and a duplex? Well, it's a special R1. That, I don't think, that's it. But if we're going to do anything, I mean, I'm against ADUs typically, but, I mean, terribly, but if we're going to do something first, the first thing we have to do is get the horse out in front of the cart and say, how are we going to enforce it? And what laws and what codes and whatever do we need to pass? And make sure the enforcement part is in place before we let the, the cow out of the barn. Because we'll never catch it once it's gone.
You know, Ms. Matthews, I couldn't agree with you anymore on, on the enforcement portion of it. I know this was before your time on council, but we've, we've had many, many discussions about our rental population and, and houses. And then we have a lot of single-family rentals and multifamily rentals and duplex rentals. We've, we've asked for council to consider a registration program many times. Because, because we can't, we can't enforce it and it's very difficult to enforce these issues.
That's my point. I mean, don't, don't tell me that we're going to build these regulations when we can't enforce the ones we have.
Well, we don't have any regulations on rentals.
Well, I mean, even as far as, yeah, I mean, we have duplexes that are being used as fourplexes and, and code's enforcement is not able to do anything about it. And, and just on a side topic, I mean, I understand now that our public information officer is resigning. I'd be in favor, since she's half, half her budget's over with the police anyway, to not replace that position and to give Chief Brennan another code's enforcement officer. Because that's one of the problems that I, as I talk to all my people in my district, this rental issue is just one of the problems that would give them more benefit than having someone separate to put announcements on the website.
No, I, I agree, again, and one more, one more staff person's not going to help because we, we don't have a lot of the regulations in place. I agree. We don't have, we need a rental, in my opinion, we need some type of, of rental registration inspection program, which we do not have.
I mean, that had been on my to-do list, but there's been so much other stuff in six months, I haven't been able to bring it up, so this is kind of forced me.
Let's, let's get back to subject, though.
Get into it. Well, this is to the subject.
No, I mean, as far as creating a rental registration list and, and beefing up our, our code enforcement ability, which I'm sure many of us agree with and would like to see that happen. But I need to get back on this subject as to whether we want to go forward with looking further. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess one specific item I'd like to ensure that there's some decent thought given to as it relates to adjacent property owners and the public review process, understanding that there may be a discussion about use by right, but still allowing some kind of either public meeting or public review or notice and some kind of input process or ability to interject or otherwise engage neighbors as, as this goes along so that everybody's clear about what's happening in their neighborhood. It, that is, of course, if this were to go forward. And then at, at the same time, thinking about the, looking at Jefferson County's square footage requirements of Sony 500, thinking about how in some areas of Wheat Ridge, the lot size may, just by, you know, a given neighborhood may not the lot size may, just by, you know, a given neighborhood may not allow any kind of ADUs to be allowed in the neighborhood, just because lot size and the maximum lot coverage may not allow any kind of ADUs. Do you see that situation occurring, where just by lot size, it's just not plausible?
Yes, and setbacks. It could be parking, I mean, some lots are going to be just practically probably too small to do these on. We thought about, because some jurisdictions, you know, do have a minimum lot size threshold for being able to apply for an ADU, just given our diversity of lot sizes here, and it's an eclectic city, right? One of its strengths. So it's not like we can, it's not like we're Arvada that has, you know, a really consistency lot pattern, just because of the era under which they developed. So we didn't think that it was a good fit for us necessarily to go with a maximum lot size threshold and get that number right, but we did think it's important to have those lot coverage requirements and the setbacks that really end up self-regulating that issue in terms of how much intensity of development you'd see on a smaller lot.
So you said, but Arvada has a max, a maximum or a minimum?
I don't know on Arvada.
Because I guess one of the things I'd like to see is that we have, I would like to see a minimum threshold, that property must have a minimum square footage requirement, because if you don't have the square footage, you don't have room for, I mean, you don't have room for another dwelling on the property. I mean, to me, it...
Minimum square footage for the ADU unit?
No, no.
Minimum, minimum lot.
Oh, lot size, okay, sorry.
Lot size in general.
Okay. And again, I mean, lots of communities choose to do that, and it's certainly a legitimate regulatory approach. In our analysis of it, just preliminarily, it just seemed challenging to, kind of on a citywide basis, get that number right, just in terms of what is the appropriate minimum lot size, given the eclectic nature of our lot sizes. It's not like we can, it's not like all of our lots were created with zoning in place, so we have lots of non-conforming lots.
Sure.
So it's, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying it's a little bit more challenging for our community, just because of the diversity of lot sizes.
Ken, are you thinking more on setbacks than...
So, but what you're saying is we can still reach that same goal by going back to the maximum lot coverage?
On a, on a smaller lot, let's say it's a 5,000-square-foot lot that's 50 by 100, you know, and you're going to have to meet minimum setback requirements for both of the units, you're going to have to have separation between the unit and the accessory if it's, if it's a detached unit. Say the maximum lot coverage is 4,000, is 40 percent, so you've got 2,000 square feet of lot coverage that's up for grabs. If you've got a 1,200-square-foot house and a 400-square-foot garage and a 100-square-foot shed, it's throwing out numbers, right? But that's 1,700, so you'd have 300 feet left, which might not be big enough just to meet our minimum requirement. I'm not sure what that minimum requirement's going to be. I mean, that's just one kind of stupid example, but that's, that's our intent, is just that those lot coverage and setback requirements effectively limit that.
And then, do we have a minimum dwelling size?
We don't. For current dwellings?
For an accessory dwelling.
We don't, but we probably will. We think at some point they'd probably be too small to be a good unit, right?
Tiny homes.
We are not proposing to tackle tiny homes or allow tiny homes.
My eight-year-old daughter's favorite show is tiny houses.
We'll take that up with shared housing and Airbnb. Also, all on our list.
Mr. Pond, Mr. Urban, did you, did you, Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Well, first, let me, I suppose, answer the question directly. I do support moving, continuing the consideration of ADUs. And I am not feeling urgent about it, which is to say that I think, you know, we should take the appropriate amount of time to do so. It doesn't, you know, I think this is an appropriate discussion right now. I think whatever time it takes us to get through this discussion, as long as we're being diligent about it, is okay. I don't disagree with Councilmember Duran's request, you know, I mean, to, you know, if there's people who feel like there's more input that needs to be received, then we should do that. And how we do that, I suppose, can be, can be figured out by staff and proposed to us, and we can, we can agree on that as a council, and that's okay. I think that's fine. I think all of the questions, concerns that were brought up, either in public comment or by council members tonight, are legitimate concerns. I mean, these are all real concerns that we should take seriously. A couple of points, though, I do want to just, I want to emphasize. One, I suppose it's nice to hear that we have support, it seems like, on this council to look at some regulatory framework for things like rental inspections. We did not previously. We discussed this previously, and we did not have consensus in study session or on the dais to do this. If we have it now, wonderful, we should, we should pursue that conversation. We did not have it previously. This discussion was, was had elaborately, okay, and extensively, and there was disagreement and not a, you know, not a majority of council who was willing to move forward with that. If we have that now, let's, you know, let's, let's discuss that, because I do believe that having appropriate ability to regulate is a reasonable thing for us to discuss. But I want to make sure, historically, people understand that we've had this discussion, and we're unable to get it across the finish line, because previous councils did not agree with it. That's just, that's just a fact. I also want to just kind of put a little bit of a flavor on the notion that R1 zones are these pastoral, you know, that there's only kind of this one vision for R1 zone, when in fact, a permitted use by right in these zones, foster care homes, group homes, these are, these are permitted uses, this is a use by right within an R1 zone. And so I think we need to be careful about talking about what a vision is when people are moving into an R1 zone, when in our code as it sits, and for a very long, longstanding period of time, we've had some things that, you know, could be, and sometimes are, actually, contradictory to that concept of what we think someone expects out of an R1 one-zone. Now, I don't say that to diminish it, because frankly, I've heard from constituents where those things can become problems, and we need to deal with that, and we do struggle with it. Parking, noise, people coming in and out, these are all issues, these are real issues. But they are permitted uses by right in residential one zones today, right now, and have been for a long time. So, you know, this is, you know, what we're talking about, I guess, to reemphasize the point about ADUs, having a robust discussion, a continued discussion, letting staff move forward with the conversation about ADUs is appropriate, absolutely. Taking all of this very seriously, trying to figure it out, taking our time, getting input, appropriate, I support that. So, you know, these, just like many of the other things that are permitted, are not simple, it's complicated. And, you know, I just, I guess, I want to, again, come back to the, to the beginning and simply state that I appreciate the effort that staff's put in to a very complicated problem and/or opportunity for us to try to, to try to advance our code to meet the changing atmosphere out there. I would like to continue the discussion, and I am absolutely open to what that looks like in terms of, you know, public input, you know, how staff, what staff presents, and, and again, taking our time. I don't, I don't, you know, I think it's topical, I think it's, it's the right time to talk about it. I don't think that this is a race, you know, against time, and I don't think we should act that way.
Thank you. Have you spoken on this, Mr., once? Let me give you a shot, and I'll get back to you. I know you have.
I, I would be in favor of going forward for the purpose, or for the reason, that we obviously have people who are interested in this. The numbers of the survey, self-selected as it is, are pretty strong in favor of going forward on this, and I would be in favor of going forward with this to explore what can be done. In the end, I would vote for something that was for families, that is to say, grandmas and grandpas, and/or boomerang kids, but I would not support ADUs as rentals in any, in any way, shape, or form. So, in essence, though, what I'm saying is, I would support going forward. One other thing I'd like to say is, does anybody know what it, I see that many of our water districts and sanitation districts are going to require separate tap fees. Does anybody know, do you know, Janice, what it costs to get a water tap or a sewer tap? I think...
A new, a new tap, I mean, they could run to 30,000, I think.
Yeah.
Water tap, yeah.
Right.
And it's a, it's a fee that you, per tap that you pay on a regular basis throughout the year.
I know, and so that's what I'm saying, if you end up needing to pay $40,000 just for a tap, or taps, or whatever it is, you know, it's many thousands, I know.
Yeah, no, it is, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a self-limiting factor right there.
Exactly, yep.
So, bottom line, I support moving forward.
And just to comment on that, I mean, there's, there's only so much we can do about that with those, you know, independent districts. I think Lakewood has observed that that's been a real limiting issue for them, and they're very similarly situated like us, with no control over their districts. I think some other communities that have more control over their water delivery, like Denver, have some workarounds potentially that we don't.
And Mr. N.
What I wanted to say is, I, I do want to move forward with the conversation. I just want to make sure that we do take our time. There's no reason that, there is not a deadline here, there's no reason we have to rush, but I want to make sure that we do have district meetings, question and answers, as council members, to do that, to do an online survey again, and to just make sure that we really, really vet this properly. And I do appreciate everything you brought to us and put together and all the efforts made so far. I just want us to continue making those efforts, so that we're not continuing, continuing a cycle of not listening or just not getting as much information and input from our citizens as possible. You know, I don't have a problem making a decision, I just want to make an educated decision.
Thank you. I'm looking for a consensus, or is there more discussion? I think we are. And what I'm hearing is, the consensus was to move forward, asking staff to further examine regulations. I guess you would bring this back once again?
Regulations, enforcement.
Enforcement, many of the things, so we, if, should, when we go forward, and to our citizens, we're well-prepared as to, this has been thought of, and that has been thought of, and thank you for this, we needed to know that as well.
I'll make a consensus. So, looking for a consensus to direct staff to continue to do research, to have on ADUs, look for more input opportunities for our citizens through district meetings or online surveys and/or both, before moving to drafting the code and then moving to the public meetings. And, yeah, I guess that's it.
I believe that's good enough. Give me a show of hands, please. We're good? Thank you.
I'd also like, it would now be an appropriate time to look for a consensus to move forward to looking at our regulations for rental?
No.
No?
I want a discussion later.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I was given a petition that some citizens turned in, I believe, to Wheat Ridge Code Enforcement, and I was given a copy myself, and have one for all of the council, by some neighbors who live in the vicinity of, I believe, 38th and Hoyt, who have struggled with a duplex that is serving as much more than a duplex, as a more of a multifamily...
We don't know that.
House.
I'd be careful by saying that publicly, because we don't know that. We're looking into it. Allegedly, would be a better word.
Allegedly, okay.
Thank you.
Then you know the house. Well, anyway, here's the petition, pictures, so on and so forth, for your review.
Can you please send this digitally?
What was the question that you handed on the call?
Yes, I have it, I will send it to you. Yep.
All right. I don't believe we need any action on that, that was just for our information, right? I think we can move on to item number three. Do you need a break or anything? That was a very long discussion. Please go ahead, let's do, five minutes or so, 10 minutes at the max. Please go ahead, let's do five minutes or so, ten minutes at the max.
The growth that was projected, there was a study done in 2011, the council report talks about this a little bit more, it talks about why the study was done and those kind of things. But the growth that was projected back then started at just under seventeen thousand vehicles per day, which was the counts that were done in 2011. And they, they looked at the, the long history of 38th Avenue, we've had counts on 38th Avenue almost since the city was incorporated, and it's just not changed that much. And, and so what the growth that was decided on with that was fifteen percent growth from now until 2035. And that puts us at just over nineteen thousand vehicles per day, and that was applied corridor wide, not just at, at one point or another. So the, the traffic study assumed we had a little over nineteen thousand vehicles per day through the entire corridor for 2035. It did not identify a maximum capacity of the corridor, and that's typically something we don't do. We generally try to figure out what the, the, the traffic's going to be at some out year, which in this case was 2035, and say, we're going to design for that. We generally don't look at it, well, how much more can we get? So, one of the things that we're recommending, based on some of the conversations and the questions that were raised by council last time, was let's just look at what that maximum capacity of that corridor, of that corridor is, rather than look at sort of the, the approximate numbers that, that are thrown around for folks that are considering restriping projects. So, the level of service, this is the level of service, and this is, and there's a lot of discussion in the, in the council memo about what level of service is and is not. What we typically look at with that is, a level of service of D is considered what we generally design that out year for, because level of service of D means you've got about an average of a one-minute delay at the traffic signal that you're looking at. And so that, that's, you know, that's sort of, if it's averaging one, some people are zero, some people are two, and that's, you know, a signal cycle generally is two minutes, so you're there for one signal cycle. The kind of stuff I see on Wadsworth going home every night is a level of service F, which is I'm at 38th for three cycles, and I'm at 44th for C cycles, and I'm, I'm just hanging out. With four lanes of traffic in 2011, it was basically, all of the intersections that were signaledized were basically level of service A and B, which is basically free-flowing. Level of service A is, the average delay is ten seconds, so you're just not getting stopped at the signals much at all. In 2035, most of those signals on 38th Avenue were still level of service A and B, except for Pierce, which dropped to a level of service C. So, with the road, with the, the road being restriped to three lanes, in 2035, the traffic study showed that the level of service at most intersections was still A and B, and at Pierce, it also just still dropped to a C. I think it was a somewhat lower C, but it was still a level of service C. And so that was considered acceptable from a level of service standpoint. Again, we generally designed for a level of service D, because that balances capacity with the cost of improvements. And so, you know, if we're going to go build something new, we're going to build Wadsworth, we're, we're hopefully going to hit a level of service D in 2040 as our goal on Wadsworth, because that way we're not overbuilding for today's conditions, and we still have an acceptable level of service in 2040. So, same kind of thing on 38th Avenue. So, the predictions from the traffic study was that there would be a travel time impact. It is going to take people longer to drive this corridor if we go to three lanes. In the eastbound direction, in the morning and the afternoon, that delay was estimated to be nineteen and thirty-four seconds, and the westbound direction was estimated to be twenty-three and ninety-nine seconds. Those were the estimates that were out of the traffic study. And the time travel studies, we haven't done time travel studies, we stopped doing those because they're fairly labor-intensive, and they've all been very consistent with these numbers, so we've stopped doing those. We didn't do those in, in last fall. But I do want to say that if, if most of our folks were driving forty-five miles an hour on 38th before, and they're now driving thirty-five miles an hour on 38th, just assuming you drive that mile and a half, and you don't hit any lights or anything, you're going to experience thirty-eight seconds longer time in the corridor just from the drop in the speeds. So, the drop in the speeds almost causes as much delay as, as going to the, to the restriping. And when we, and when we did the, the, the original traffic study, we always assume people are driving the speed limit when we do those additional time travel things. So, the diversion analysis, there was a diversion analysis in that original 2011 study, and it said that some diversion was anticipated. If it looks like another road is less congested, and I can get there, I can go faster, then people might divert off of 38th and drive that other road. The diversion analysis that was done showed that if you were trying to get from Sheridan 38th to Wadsworth 38th, the quickest way to go is still on 38th. It doesn't do any good to, to take back roads and go around by, by several minutes, actually. And so, those other routes weren't as attractive. Now, some people might still do it because they think they can go faster. And, and in particular, if people diverted all the way to 44th, well, 44th has lots of capacity, we run around fourteen or fifteen thousand cars a day, and it's still four lanes. So, if, you know, if, if a bunch of people divert to 44th, then that's probably not a big deal at all, because we've got plenty of capacity in 44th Avenue. So, the outcomes of that was, again, sort of just summarizing that the growth, our three-lane section that we, that we're counting right now is still well below what that future was anticipated to be. The travel time, some delays as anticipated, and the diversion, we might have some diversion. We haven't gone out and surveyed license plates or something to figure out if people are diverting or something, but there's a potential, there's some diversion. Some of the parallel routes have seen an increase in traffic since the restriping in 2012. The corridor in general is performing as expected, and is very consistent with the 2011 traffic study. And, you know, I do want to point out, the traffic study never said there won't be impacts by going to three lanes from four lanes. It acknowledged that we were going to have impacts, but the impacts were acceptable in order to achieve a main street. So, I do want to say the traffic study and, and the, the studies and things have always said there are going to be impacts of going to three lanes, but we think those impacts are manageable and they're acceptable, given what we're going, given what we're trying to achieve here. So, the other stuff that was sort of brought up was about bus pullouts, and what the, what the traffic study recommended was that we have bus pullouts at Pierce and Harland Street because of the high ridership at those two locations. Also at Kendall Street, where the, the senior high-rise building is, the ridership is lower there, but we tend to have longer dwell times, because the passengers tend to move a little slower as they're getting onto the bus and, and getting to their seats, and the bus drivers typically don't take off until everybody's sat down. So, we did, we did, and that's why the road wiggles right there, is to provide those bus stops on either side. Currently, just because we have parking on the south side, the buses pull over in those parking lanes in order to, in order to offload and load. So, on the eastbound direction, we basically have bus pullouts at every single bus stop that we have. The 2014 design also included bus pullouts at High Court. The thought was, is, this is a major intersection for our corridor, especially during school times, so the thought was, let's go ahead and leave bus pullouts there, even though the, the original traffic study didn't include those. There was also some questions about the Wadsworth double left, double left turn lanes. Those were not due to a projected increase in traffic, they were due to try to reduce the green time necessary for that movement. If we can get that movement from twenty or thirty seconds down to ten or twenty seconds, then we save ten seconds of time to, to put on some other movement that, that, that needs the time. So, that's why on the Wadsworth, we're actually proposing double lifts at both 44th and 38th for that reason, is to try to reduce that green time it needs for those double lifts to occur. And then, as far as the merge goes, there's eight hundred feet of street from Wadsworth until people have to merge at Uppam Street. So, there's around eight hundred feet for people to, to figure out where they need to go and, and get wiggled over and, and do that kind of thing. So, again, following up on the council consensus from, from our last meeting was, one of the things we wanted to talk about was, was council member Urban's designs that he had, and also the 2016 retrofit additional information that was, that was requested by the other folks with that consensus. So, the pre-striping street configuration, all of the lanes before were ten-foot lanes, so they were already at the minimum. In the four-lane section, from asphalt to asphalt is forty feet, and then the five-lane section from asphalt to asphalt edge was fifty feet. So, those lanes were already at the minimum section. So, if the road is restriped back to four and five lanes, then those existing curbs are where the curbs need to be, we can't move those in at all. So, that was just sort of looking at that. And we looked at the same software. They don't have a curb and gutter selection in that software, it's very odd, that a really important part of their street is not part of that software. We had to fake it in. On the streetscape, so on the, so if we add streetscape to that four and five-lane section, council member Urban had proposed a six-foot sidewalk, and, and then the, the amenities on those varied from three to four feet. If we want to have trees, we've got to have a four-foot amenity zone minimum. And, and so, and if we do that, then right-of-way is required. And so, there were two graphics that were included. The black bars below indicate what the existing right-of-way is, which is, which is, most of the corridor has sixty feet, a portion of it has, and it varies even in that portion, from sixty-nine to seventy-one to seventy-point-something. So, we just said seventy feet to kind of round off. And the, the, the sort of pinkish-orangey color on either side is the additional right-of-way needed to implement, that six-foot sidewalk and four-foot amenity zone. That would be needed beyond the right-of-way that we have today. And then in the four-lane section, that's, the, the pink area, again, there shows you the additional right-of-way needed to implement, that six-feet and four-foot section. We basically have a five-foot sidewalk there today, so to go to six feet, we need basically, you know, five, five more feet in order to pull that off. So, moving on, just kind of as a reminder, the 2016 retrofit was three lanes, five-foot sidewalks, potentially disconnected amenity zones, on-street parking around High Court, no bike lanes, right-of-way or easements at driveways. When we hit a driveway with a sidewalk, we've got to have a flat spot where that driveway is, and if, if the driveway is attached to the road, we've got to have that flat spot be behind. So, we're going to have to do something to accommodate that sidewalk travel behind the driveways. Again, as a reminder, this is, this was just a graphic that we had last time showing what that retrofit looked like. So, option one, which is the option we've always sort of been looking at, was to slope the amenity island towards the street. And with that, it's difficult to make a connection from that island to the sidewalk, because there's about a four-and-a-half-inch grade difference between the sidewalk and, and the, the back end of that island, if you will. And so, what you could include in that is trees, planters, and lights, because if you don't connect to it, then you can't put benches and trashcans out there. It'd be difficult. There are ways to do it, but it gets really complicated and crazy. The stormwater capacity in that section's reduced by about half. As we started looking at this, we started looking at more things than just what is it? We started looking at stormwater capacity. We might have to add some inlets to the, to the system in order to address that, and we're going to show a graphic that shows that. There are also going to be some maintenance issues. Right now, if we want to clean out the curb and gutter, we just drive a sweeper down it. If we have this kind of arrangement, we've got to clean that out by hand or some other method, because we have a two-foot thing in the middle there to sort of deal with. So, this is, this is our little graphic that we put together. The red stuff in the bottom view is showing the new stuff that's built, whereas the other stuff is all, is the, the top view is the existing, and, and so you can see the blue area is the stormwater capacity, assuming the, the, the street's flowing curb-full. And when you go down to that section section, you take out about half that stormwater capacity by putting that amenity island in. So, that's just another little nuance we, we, we sort of realized as we were going down this path, and wanted to make sure we pointed that out to council. So, the second option, we just slope the island towards the sidewalk. In that case, the back of the island's about the same grade as the sidewalks, so we could make that connection back and forth between those. If you have short chases, if you just have short connections, maybe four or five feet wide from the sidewalk to the island, so people could get out there, then those could be solid. If you have them longer than that, we'd have to start putting grates in, because the stormwater coming off the amenity island would have to have someplace to go. It would require removal of cover and gutter wherever those chases are put in. And our estimated cost for that, we've not built these, so we called some contractors and asked around, is about three hundred dollars a lineal foot. And in the staff memo, I said if we sort of did these whole scale through the corridor, we start to approach the cost of, of full reconstruction. And the things we could include would be trees, planters, and lights, and if they're connected, then there's a chance we could put some seating out there and maybe trashcans and things, but it's still going to feel a little awkward, because it's still not connected to sidewalk. It's like you're going out to something that doesn't seem like it's part of the sidewalk. And again, if we've got those chases, it sort of increases our level of, of keeping those things cleaned out. We have to pop the grates out or use a jet to, to get the debris out from underneath those. So, and again, this is sort of the picture showing the same kind of view, just the amenities on a sloping back towards the sidewalk. So, with either option, the conditions vary a lot along the corridor. The graphic we showed you was around Reed Street. We have a lot, our corridor's psychotic, it just is. We've got four-foot sidewalks in some places, we've got five-foot sidewalks, we've got different things going on, and so we do have to sort of modify that. With either of those options, we have to sort of, you know, fit those in where we have to. The one place that's really different is right around High Court, where the previous on-street parking we had in that concrete area up against the, the sidewalk. In that case, we could slope the amenity island towards the street, because the existing, the existing concrete slopes towards the street. And I'm just going to skip this and talk about it when I flash the picture up. In that area, we could, we could definitely include trees, existing trees and new trees, planters, lights, seating, trashcans, everything, and in that case, there's no effect on stormwater capacity at all. And so, what we're talking about is this is, this is one of those retrofit areas. This is out in front of Posey Girl, as you can tell, because she's got all the flowers out in the, in the, the tree area. And so, you can see that, that where the blue arrow is pointing, that's where the low point in the street is, it's not back at the curb, it's actually out where the next, the curb is, right at the bottom of the picture, but that concrete area actually slopes out towards the street. And so, what you could do is actually fill that entire area in, and just make a much wider amenity zone with that area. And so, this is what that sort of looks like in cross-section. You, you could remove that six-foot existing amenity zone, put an eight-foot sidewalk in, and then add six-foot of amenity zone at there, just right on top of that existing concrete. We wouldn't even have to remove the concrete there. So, I, we just wanted to point out that at High Court, things are a little different than they are on the rest of the stra, or a lot different than they are on the rest of the street, just on that south side. So, the ballot language that's included in the packet, we have template one, is if there's only one question, do you want to do A? And then, the second thing is ballot two, is if there's more than one question, do you want to do X or Y? It starts, sort of starts to feel like an eye exam at that point. And then, there's four different ways this could play out. If, if either X or Y gets yes, and the other one gets no, then those options, one of those options moves forward. If they both get yes, or they both get no, then neither option can move forward with the way the ballot language has to be written. So, so just want to, want to make sure that there's an understanding of that. I think Mr. Dahl talked about that last time, but we thought, if we put it down in words, sometimes it makes more sense. Not that he didn't make a lot of sense last time, I don't want to, don't want to imply. And if there's a street requirement, again, we'd recommend that that be done much later in the process, after we've got design plans done, that we really know what's going on out there. So, the next steps, finalize the scope with council. We hope to do that tonight, and we're going to talk more about schedules and deadline here in just a minute. Once we finalize that scope with council, assuming we move forward with our project, we would prepare conceptual design and conceptual cost estimates very quickly. As a part of that process, we'd be identifying sales tax options that would have both percentage, and certainly council could just tell us what the percentage is going to be, but also looking at what an estimated sun schedule might be with that. And then, if the three-lane sections move forward, we recommend immediately, actually, we'd like to do this right away if a three-lane section moves forward, is to go ahead and hire a muller to determine the maximum capacity of the street, just so we know what that So, the ballot deadlines, this is why we'd like a decision tonight if we can get there. At the July 25th meeting, the council would need to approve an election resolution. And we basically, by the time the council action form is due to the folks downstairs, so they can start putting packages together, we have five weeks from tonight to get that done. So, we, depending on what council moves forward, we've got a lot of work to do as staff to pull that off. We can't really hire a consultant for this at this point, because it would take longer to hire a consultant than it would be, than we've got deadline for. So, again, we'd love to have a decision tonight. And the reason we have to do the July 25th is by July 29th, we have to notify JFCO that the city has an action for the general election, an item for the general election. And then, we immediately start turning around with, with additional stuff for first reading of ballot language on August 8th, and second reading of ballot language, and the public hearing on August 22nd. So, again, we've got some very, very tight deadlines in order to meet the things that we've got to do here. September 9th is then when the ballot language is due to Jefferson County, which is just a couple of weeks later. And then, on November 8th, I believe, I ran out of space at the bottom of my slide, November 8th is the date of the general election. So, we've got, if we want to do something this year, and it goes to ballot, we've got to move very, very quickly on, on where we're going with this. So, we're back to the same question we asked last time, which is, do we do a project on 38th Avenue? And so, the yes, I changed these a little bit. The yes is, what design, how much, and what do we do with the rest of the corridor? If we only do a piece of the corridor, then what do we do with the rest of the corridor in the interim? Because we do have folks that are approaching as we're redevelopment projects and things like that. And then, if it's a no, what does that no action mean? Do we implement the streetscape design manual, we do something different, and then do we keep it at three lanes, do we go back to four lanes, or is there some other option that we do? And then, also the question of, and I didn't talk about the green at all tonight, we covered that quite a bit last time, do we invest in the green as a yes or no question? So, that's all I've got. Thirty-one slides, I think I did pretty good.
Should we applaud?
Let's start out with Mr. Ann, who's got an arm up.
Last time it was discussed to have metal grates between the two feet between the sidewalk, and you were going to give us the cost on those.
Yeah, that's the three hundred dollars per foot.
Okay, for those.
Yeah, so, so if we do, you know, if we do the entire corridor, which was five or six thousand feet, or whatever that number was, then that's, that becomes one point five to one point eight million dollars. So, it becomes a very big number if you implemented whole scale. If you just do pieces and parts at different places, then it becomes a much smaller number.
So, can you give me an estimation of cost for Plan A, which was the complete reconstruction, correct? Just an estimate, so I can jot it down, and the citizens can hear. And Plan B, and did, did you happen to put costs together for Councilman Urban's plan?
We did not put costs together for Mr. Urban's plan. We, we, all we were asked to do was to vet what he had and, and come back with that. So, we've not done a direct cost on, on his plan. So, the retrofit option, and I, if I can take the time to go pull up the old PowerPoint, or Lauren may have that number.
Okay, just an idea.
Yeah, so in our last meeting memo, the full reconstruction, seven and a half to nine point seven-five million, and the retrofit option was four and a half to six point seven-five million.
Okay, the other question, thank you. The other question I have is, with the retrofit, if at some time, we needed to go back to four lanes because of growth and traffic, you said that would be costly. Can you give me an idea of what that cost would be? Just an estimate.
I did do an estimate on that. So, I did just a lineal foot estimate of what it would cost to build a retrofit island, also what it would cost to demo one out, based on our historical cost data. And to take one out was about sixty percent of the actual construction cost, based on just that lineal foot estimate.
So, sixty percent of those numbers Lauren just gave?
Yeah, and again, depending on how far you implement and what you do. So, so if you build a million dollars' worth of retrofit, it would cost you six hundred thousand to take it all out.
So, okay, and that goes to my next question. The corridor, is this from Uppam to Reed, Uppam to Pierce, what?
So, those numbers were based on from Uppam to Harlan.
Okay.
Numbers, because, because in the, in the create your 38th process, we were talking about from Uppam to Harlan.
So, it would be sixty percent from Uppam to Harlan, if we went with the retrofit, if we wanted to go back? Okay.
That's, that's if you took it, took it back out, it's the sixty percent.
Exactly, okay. And can you confirm one other thing for me? The street width designation, is that something that plays into that retrofit plan? You have an option one and, and another option, so.
If the, if the retrofit is implemented corridor-wide, just like the full reconstruct is implemented corridor-wide, then, then yes, street width becomes part of that conversation. Once you hit those thresholds of what's in the charter and, and in the code, code, then once you hit those thresholds, then you've got to do street width, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Just to follow up on that point, when you talk about thresholds along the corridor, is there a certain street at which that threshold is not met, and therefore, the street width designation would not be triggered, as it relates to a, a specific Uppam to which street would not trigger the street width?
So, what the, what the code section says about street width, you know, the charter is very, is fairly general in what it talks about with street width, and so the code section actually helps define and clarify what's going on. The code section has a provision that if you're doing something less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet, then it doesn't require a street width.
But we're doing more than two-hundred-and-fifty feet?
Again, depending on, depending on what council decides to do, in theory, if, if we do the full street from Uppam to Harlan, with either option, with anything we do out there, just about, except restriping, then we've got to do the street width, yes.
Okay, there's one more.
Question on the street width designation, so you know how you showed us the section in front of Posey Girl? And you had mentioned something to the effect of, well, if you extend the sidewalk and an amenity zone there, of course, the drainage and stuff, we wouldn't have to change, because it was at the low point, but would that be a part of the street width designation? Or because it's already cut in, and we're not really cutting into the street, like that section necessarily wouldn't, like, say first, let's pretend, let's just say we say, we're going to just put sidewalks in front of the property in, in this area, and we're going to take that section out and put a sidewalk. That wouldn't necessarily trigger the street width designation, because you're not changing the street width there, correct?
Yeah, we've talked to the city attorney about this, because it's just a weird section. We've talked about this section, and because the charter defines street width as flowline to flowline, and the flowline in this case is where the blue arrow is, then, then our thought is that we could fill that in without triggering street width with what's being done there, because it's outside the flowline. And talking with the city attorney about, you know, the various nuances of the code
More questions or discussions? Mr. Matthews?
Do we have, I've got a couple of questions here. One is, do we have projected percents of increase of traffic on Wadsworth to 2035 or four, or forty?
We had 2035 numbers, because that was the model we were under at the time. We're looking at the 2040 numbers now, because they, they did those while we were going through the process.
Twenty thirty-five would be fine, I'm trying to match it to 38th.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what the percentages are. I know that the 2040 numbers are very similar to the 2035 numbers, and so, we are, we are still definitely seeing an increase, and I, I think on Wadsworth, maybe, and Lauren might correct me, I thought I heard your last thing, that maybe it was still a thirty percent increase from today's traffic to 2040, for instance, but again, Wadsworth is a very, very different corridor than 38th Avenue is.
But, my point is, that's going to, somehow, rather, that's got to increase the amount of left turns on the 38th.
Well, you know, the Wadsworth corridor is interesting, and looking at the traffic on that, fifteen percent of the traffic is local traffic, the other eighty-five percent is, is commuter traffic running through the city. So, basically, from one limit to the other limit. So, only fifteen percent of that traffic is actually local traffic.
The other thing I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about too, I want to talk about the green space first. Even though it's not, it's, it's a part of the whole big picture, could you explain to me how that green space is going to work in, since we don't own that property?
That's probably more.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We currently have memorandum of understanding with the school district to, to use the site for city events, and we actually, we're in discussions with the school district over the last couple of years of potentially redeveloping that site into more formal kind of gathering space, or event space, or city plaza. And they've initially given us support for a concept like that. We actually, they've actually seen the design that was done as part of the 2014 process. So, that would have to be more negotiations to come, but they, they gave us initial support for moving forward with some type of construction on the site.
And then, the other thing that's been kind of concerning me, because we're, we're kind of locked into two projects here, and I'm concerned about the timing of Wadsworth and 38th being somewhat simultaneous, and our cash flow, and how do we pay from both at the same time, and do we have a priority? It's not a little question.
It's not, money, money's always a good question. And, you know, as, as Mark referenced in one of the slides, I think, I think it's, it's true, if, if you want to move forward with 38th Avenue as a project, depending on the cost, I think we're going to have to look at a new revenue source, a tax increase, some type of tax increase, sunset it of some sort. If it's a very small project, maybe we could, you know, a couple million dollars, we might be able to fit it into our budget, but I think anything over a couple million is going to be tough. Yeah, the Wadsworth project, we need to, we're still looking to fill the fourteen-million-dollar gap. The city needs to come up with six million for its match, which we're hoping to be able to do over the next two or three years, and our budget is to put that six million aside in the CIP budget. But, yeah, you're right, money, money's a, a question.
Where's the other eight million on that fourteen?
We, that, we're, hopefully, a lot of that's going to be from value engineering during the, once the project's designed, but the, you know, the forty-five million was just an estimate at the very beginning of what the, the project was going to cost. We've been meeting with CDOT. They've potentially, non-committal, committed as much as they can to maybe $3 million of that for deferred maintenance that they're not going to have to put into the road. We're still working with them on additional grants. Hopefully, a tiger grant that we're going to look at, which this project is very eligible for that type of grant, even though those are very hard to get, but.
Does that include utility relocation?
There is a budget. I think it's $2.5 million is part of that 45 million that was in there for utility relocates.
I just, you know, I'm really concerned about that, because we read water alone, it said 3 to 6 million.
Yep.
We've actually talked to Mr. Hudson. He came to our last meeting, our open house that we had a couple of weeks, or a week ago, or something. I'm fuzzy on the time. But he actually told us that, boy, if he could replace, he's got an eight-inch, I think, very old iron water main.
Are we talking Wadsworth or 38th?
Wadsworth, Wadsworth. And so he's told us that if he could replace his line with a 12-inch new line while we're building Wadsworth, that'd be great, because he could save like $2 million in traffic control and everything else. So, you know, that's something that we will continue to have conversations.
I would like you to talk to Barry.
Yep.
Because he's sent me a letter saying it would be $3 to $6 million on Wadsworth. He had him put a line on each side of the new street.
Yeah, Barry's the one that came to our last meeting.
Take one out and replace two. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And so, but I would like to know how this is going to fall together, because I got a feeling, especially because we're kind of in lockstep, if you will. I don't mean, I don't want to say that, but working in sync with CDOT, it seems to me we're locked into Wadsworth. And I'm.
We want to take advantage of Wadsworth, for sure, right? Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying.
So I mean, if we tell CDOT to go pound sand, well, we'll be there 30 years later, waiting for the sand to come home.
Right.
So what happens then? How does the timing on this all going to work out? And so I'm worried about cash flow and also construction interference between the two projects.
Kristi?
Yeah, so that, I mean, that was one of the questions. When does actual construction start on Wadsworth? I know one would think it would be, oh, next year, but it's like 2019 or when?
We're hoping to start construction in early 2019, but that's going to require us to do some, to get permission from the feds to start working on design work while they're still going through the final approvals on some things. Otherwise, it'd be mid to late 2019 before we start construction. I took a quick glance at the schedule today, as I was plugging in the dates that we've got for when we got to get to Jefferson County with ballot stuff. And it appears that if, you know, again, depending on the size and the scope of the project, that we could potentially do a project on 38th and 18th, so we could beat Wadsworth, if you will. We could get 38th done before Wadsworth starts. And again, that's something we do want to continue to look at as we keep going down this path with both projects. We certainly don't want to tear up both roads at the same time.
Patrick, I think you want to.
Well, maybe I could speak to Mr. Matthews' question about the cash flow. You know, I'll speak in hypotheticals. If you decide to move forward with the project, whatever the project is, and you take it to the ballot, and as part of the ballot question, you ask for some type of tax increase, sunset it or not, you know, that could be this November, let's say it passes. If it passes, we would start design of whatever the project is for 38th Avenue. That would probably take a good part of next year. So we wouldn't probably start construction until maybe fall of even that, of 2017. So the sales tax increase would be coming in throughout, starting January 1st. We would put that away in a special fund for 38th Avenue project. So I don't anticipate the funding being an issue for 38th Avenue. But you're right, the Wadsworth project still has a huge gap. And that, you know, that might be another tax increase that city council may want to consider to fill that gap, because that is a priority to get that road done. We don't want to lose a $25 million grant. I agree.
Other members? Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
So, trying to get on task here. So our task tonight is to decide on an option. So I guess I'll just start with that. I think the Create Your 38th process was a great process. And a lot of people, 1,000 people or so, were involved in that. They worked very hard and very diligently and voted democratically to reach their conclusions. And I think their conclusions have to be honored. Otherwise, I don't want them to feel like they wasted their time. And I understand that there are other issues involved here. I would like to say, really, that we need to remember that the vision for 38th Avenue is to create a beautiful place to gather, to walk, to communicate with one another, to sit and talk over a beer. And the number of lanes, in essence, is just a detail in that overall plan. And I realize, as we all know, that that's a very important detail for a lot of people. But we have to keep the vision in mind. The vision is the complete street vision of something that is usable by everybody, young and old. So I guess I'm rambling now. But it is true, the 38th voted for the complete rebuild. It's also true that the retrofit with grates would cost almost the same as the complete rebuild. So I really am not seeing much sense in doing a rebuild or a retrofit when it doesn't save us any money. And what we get out of that is just sort of half a thing. It's not the complete vision that we were going for. So I think I, if it is possible to do so, I would rather go with the complete rebuild. The, I do recognize, though, that there are hindrances, such as the ability of a few people to block the whole project based on flow line. So I, it's all a big guess whether we can get it through or not. I understand that. But I think, in order to maintain our vision, the most, the best way to do that is the complete rebuild.
Okay. Do we want, I've got three hands up. Let's start with Davis, you were up first.
So I just, I think it's probably good for us all to voice what our thoughts are. So kind of going on to what Mr. Fitzgerald was saying. I mean, I do, I mean, lots of people always hear me say, I'd like to just knock one out of the park. You know, just do it right. Not put, you know, concrete planters in the middle of the street and call it Main Street type of thing. I would, I would really like to just knock one out of the park. And I do think that the complete rebuild, you know, again, if it was my wallet and my expense, that's what I would do. But I think historically, I do feel that we, you know, with some of the previous votes and previous comments, that's a big paycheck, or that's a big amount for our citizens to consider. And it's especially a big amount when we're also pulling together a dirt task force who might be coming up with, you know, funding for Wadsworth and those kinds of things, that we will have perhaps an additional ask of our community. So although I want to knock it out of the park, and I want to do the complete, you know, if we do it, let's do it right. I mean, even, again, to mirror, even what Mr. Urban, his design, I mean, I think if it was all things being equal, if it was the four lanes or the three lanes, all things being equal with the five-foot sidewalks or six-foot sidewalks and three, four-foot amenity zones, we'd have to pull into people's properties, which would even create a bigger cost. Because, and then it's also a discussion on top of that, you know, that we've not had the discussion with some of the property owners of, you know, taking right-of-way and that type of thing. So that's even a bigger planning schedule to consider along the way. But I do think, you know, I do support putting it on the ballot. I support if we can come up with one ballot question. And then the other thing is, is I, you know, I do understand the Create Your 38th process. But I also do understand there were some drawbacks to, of our community of wanting to spend that much money there. And knowing that we have lots of other projects and lots of other things going on in our city, you know, should we focus that much money in one area? I completely understand that. And I think, I had one more item, but I just think that, you know, I do think there needs to be a ballot question, I would prefer one. I think it needs to have the amount. And then after that, I think also, as a council, we need to decide, if it doesn't pass, that we, we've heard. And we go back to looking at, I know at the Create Your 38th discussions, they did talk about four lanes with reduced speeds and things like that, that might be a happy medium. Now, I know the bad news is, is it won't create the amenity zones and stuff, because we won't have the money, because that wasn't a ballot question. But I do think that once that ballot question passes or fails, that we need to go back to the thought of, okay, with four lanes, what would that look like? Or what do we do next if it does fail? And we kind of commit to somewhat of a process there.
Okay. All right. Wait. You know, I know I had somebody over here, and I had this fellow, okay. Mr. In?
Okay, thanks. What I wanted to say was, I do appreciate and respect the fact of the families and citizens that participated in the Create Your 38th process. That was four months, that was evenings, that was taking their kids, bringing them to the daycare there at the rec center. So I do appreciate that, and I do respect the fact that they picked Plan A, which was a complete reconstruction. So if you truly want to listen to their voice, that's what you need to listen to. I also feel it's important to listen to the citizens who supported the four-lane design. There were eight four-lane designs there. May not have been in the top, you know, five or three, but there were. And I think to dismiss that is wrong. I support having two questions on the ballot. I wouldn't support just having one question on the ballot, because then we're just dismissing the rest of the participants that said, hey, we like a four-lane design, and here's eight of them. I think it's important to give citizens a choice. If you're going to say, here, this is all you have, this retrofit piece, because it's less expensive, when you kind of add up what it would be to remove that retrofit piece, 60% going from Wadsworth to Harlan, the cost of that comes up to the same cost as the complete reconstruction. Marcus said 60% of the total cost. Am I correct, Mark? That's pretty expensive. It comes pretty close to the complete reconstruction. So I would support two questions on the ballot. If it's going to end up being one question on the ballot, whatever that might be, then I would like at the end of that question to be, if this fails, 38th Avenue goes back to the original design, which was back in 2011. And that was four lanes, fifth lane for turn lane. Because we've gone through this for four years now, or longer. And we need to have something decided at that time, so that we're not spending more money on consultants, getting more ideas. We just need to get it done. But for me, I support two questions. Then you're really reaching out to the entire city. And if the three-lane complete reconstruction passes, it passes. You know, I'll support that. If the four lanes pass, I support that also. This is about our citizens, and this has been dividing our community for a really long time. It's divided many of us, and it needs to stop. And the only way it's going to stop is if we say, here, here's option A, here's option B. Have at it, make your decision, vote on it, and go from there.
So are you supporting complete rebuild or retrofit?
Complete rebuild and a four-lane option. Because that's what the 1,000 citizens that participated wanted.
But I think one question, so you factored in the cost of what it would cost to tear down the retrofit. But if you're tearing down the retrofit, I'm guessing you're doing that because you need the more lanes. So you'd be tearing down the complete reconstruction, too, if it was for that same reason.
Well, it would be more difficult to do.
As the same.
Well, yeah, but there's a lot of factors here. You have to decide, maybe it doesn't go from Uppam to Harlan. Maybe it goes from, you know, point A to point B, I don't know. I'm just saying. Well, for me, it works, because I'm thinking of the cost of, if you're going to spend $5 million to put a retrofit in now, in two years from now, or however long, you're going to have to go rip all that out. And we're asking the citizens for more money to rip that out, because we've outgrown it. You know, I'm trying to think down the road.
But you'd have the same cost for a $9 million sidewalk area.
Well, bottom line is, they deserve an option. If it's a complete reconstruction or a four-lane option, they deserve to be able to make that choice. I don't think it's up to us, eight of us, to take that away from them. We've done that long enough. Thank you.
Okay. So you're advocating, all right, I think I understand what you're advocating for. All right, Mr. Urban?
Thank you. As it relates to the design proposals that I've submitted as an alternative to the Create Your 38th process, I appreciate the staff time and energy that went into vetting those. And thank you, Mark and your team, and Patrick, for your consideration of those. And just as some feedback to that vetting process, and just looking at the information presented, knowing that after you consider the four 10-foot travel lanes and the existing right-of-way, there appears to be about seven and a half feet on either side, maybe 15 feet total of potential right-of-way that could be used for sidewalk and amenity purposes. And I'm not stuck on mirror imaging the street on both sides. It could be such that one side of the street has significantly more sidewalk than the other side of it does. And that's not something that I'm stuck on exactly how that's done. And, you know, as we look at how these designs come down, I'm not a traffic engineer or designer by any means, but I think in concept, the idea is that residents be given a choice at the ballot to choose from either a four-lane design or a three-lane design. And specifically because the four-lane design does take up more room, that does leave less room for sidewalks and amenity zones. And therefore, the design would have to sort of consider that or place that on one side or the other. And I would leave that to staff to figure out the best way to place that sidewalk in amenity zone, or what side to place that on. But as it relates to how to place that, I'm not really sure that council's in the position to say how that design should be looking or should be designed. But the concept would be that ballot question would say, should this road be a three-lane or a four-lane design? Because I really think that comes down to, and then that would more than likely result, as described in the memo, two separate questions. It would either be this design or this design. And those, in my understanding, based on how this is described, that those would have two different cost estimates, and people would choose which one they wanted. So I think that that choice does not, by any means, and I've said this time and again, that this choice and this opportunity to have a choice does not take away from the product of the Create Your 38th process. It allows an alternative to that process. And I think that that's what property owners and other residents have sought, is some alternative, so that we have some kind of final product, that at the end of this process, we have something to walk away with. And I just, I think that some choice, not just going out with one design and hoping people pass it, both with a sales tax increase, because we're asking, again, we don't have the money to do either one. And we are also trying to avoid a likely street width designation on either design, likely. I'm not certain about the design that I've proposed, whether there would be a street width designation or not, depending on the curb insertion of the curb width and whatnot. But it's likely, let's just say, that both require a street width designation. Because there's alternatives, I think that that produces a less likely environment for protests to occur. And I think we're all in the mindset to reduce the likelihood of a protest occurring, because that further comes up to works for whatever we want to choose. So having that alternative achieves that goal. Obviously, certain folks don't like one design over the other, that's why there's choices. And so I would ask staff to utilize the Create Your 38th design as the preferred design that came out of that process, and use this proposed design that I've developed as a starting point to come up with a basis for that other design. And that's giving two ballot questions and giving people a choice at the ballot. That would be my consensus.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
I've got a couple of questions. One is, this is kind of about the islands on option B that came out. How extensive are those islands? What's the gap between them?
You know, if we implement what we've called the full retrofit, then you would have gaps where there's driveways.
Right. But on the option, yeah.
Yeah.
On option B, which was not the $6,000 one, where there's islands, you know, it was the expense of retrofit.
Right.
I'm not understanding why there's only 5,000 feet of curb on that option.
Well.
You're putting in four curb lines. That's what I'm asking, what's the width, the open space between islands? Because it's a mile long, if you're putting in four curb lines.
Do you have one of those maps handy that you could pull up?
I'm not asking for exact numbers.
Yeah, just to give an idea, though, if you can pull this up real quick.
We've been playing around with things.
Since, I've heard that.
It's Harlan to Uppam.
Harlan to Uppam.
The original plan's Harlan.
So this is, this is an example of what a, this is where we could put islands under a full retrofit scenario, just from Uppam to Pierce. Yeah.
That's, I thought the full retrofit was going to, I was told.
I understand, so let me explain, explain why. We had done an exercise four years ago, in which we took our base striping maps. So we did, because we've been under a time constraint, we basically had one week to work on this before we had to start working on the memo. So we had done a thing back when Tim Pronto was still our Public Works Director on, you know, if we did something a little bit at a time, what could we possibly do? And we had put something together, we just took our PDFs of the design plans and slapped in some islands and things. So when this option came up, when this retrofit thing came up, and we had only done that from Uppam to Pierce. And so when this idea of the retrofit thing, doing a full retrofit, came up at the last meeting, I took that sketch and modified that to show, here's what a full retrofit from Uppam to Pierce would look like. We, I didn't do it from Pierce to Harlan, just because we hadn't spent any time at all on that in the past. I was able to do this very, very quickly.
Okay.
So this is an example. So this is an example of just what's there from Uppam to Pierce.
Okay. And I'm not trying to be argumental. Because I'm just trying to get apples to apples. Because I was told all four estimates ran from Harlan to Uppam. And if this one is only running to Pierce, well, then it's not apples for apples. And if you're talking about doing the whole length, this cost almost doubles.
The work that the consultant had done went all the way to Pierce. And they had showed islands just on the south side of the street from Pierce to Harlan. And I could try to go find that drawing and pull that up.
Okay. That still would have two curb lines, which is two miles. And I'm trying to understand why there's only 500, 500 feet of curb line.
Well, that was just an estimate of more or less the length of the corridor. And so we've got from Uppam to Pierce, we'd have those islands on both sides. And what the consultant had put together then, from Pierce to Harlan, the islands were only on the one side. Because that part of the corridor is right now narrower. So if we do a retrofit, the islands are only four feet wide. And within a four-foot-wide island, built the way those are, they said it'd be better for the trees just to put the islands on just the south side and have like a six- or eight-foot island.
Okay.
So that's why.
I still think this needs to be reviewed if we're gonna approach it. Because it seems like there's a bust in the numbers.
Whatever we move forward with, we want to go back and look at all the quantities and all the numbers as quickly as we possibly can to make sure that what goes on the ballot is a real number.
And then as an aside, intuitively, I believe that if we were to do a four-lane option with amenity zones or Zach's, Mr. Urban's, option, I believe that there could be some cost savings there. Because unless the curb's just in terrible shape, you're not putting in a whole lot of curb. You're basically just doing work behind the curb lines. And I can't imagine that that wouldn't come in at 60% of a whole retro, a whole rebuild.
You have to buy property.
Well, but we already have money for some property acquisition. And it's a case of my case. But I'm just saying that there's significant savings there in construction cost. And even if you had to buy some property, that part of it, I can't tell you what it would end up with. But $10 million versus $6 million, you could buy a lot of easement for $4 million, if you had to buy easement in places. And then I'm not sure. And then my other question was, how does this deal out of the streetscape plan, where if a property owner wants to improve his property, he's gotta give eight and six feet in places? I mean, we already have an eminent domain mechanism. And I know we're forcing this. But our people, some people are already having to, if they want to improve their property, give 14 feet of right-of-way. So there's other options there that we haven't looked at.
That's only with TIF.
And I don't know how that falls into this whole process of rebuilding the road. And then the other point is too, I mean, I hope everybody realizes there's more than one way to slow traffic. I mean, it was presented to them that three lanes was the only way. I mean, on 44th Avenue between Wad's and Youngfield, from my observations, without having a radar gun, people pretty well follow the 35 mile an hour speed limit. We've got four flashing radar signs that people see. And it seems to be a fairly effective way of keeping speeds down. So there are other options, other than just three lanes.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, are you ready?
I am ready, actually. And I, I've got a bit to say. And I just ask for some patience while I try to walk through this. Because I've obviously thought about this for a while. And I'm just wanna try to get through some of my thoughts as others have shared. And actually try to propose a potential option. And I want to start just by, it struck me, and it has, as long as I've been involved, yes, there are some things that have divided us. There's one thing that remains constant. And I just say it because I thought about it tonight. And it's worth, you know, saying out loud. And that is, we all love our community. We're serving here because we care about it. And we care about it in different ways. And we have different opinions. And sometimes we argue about that. And sometimes feelings are hurt, you know. And that, but we absolutely care about this community. We care about where it's going. I always feel that way and have always felt that way, sitting at this table, sitting at the dais, being on the planning commission, et cetera. And I feel that way tonight. And I'll feel that way next Monday, et cetera. You know, we've been doing this, and I think there's been mention of four or five years. It's been longer than that, I'm certain. And I think we're also have some common ground of wanting to find resolution to this. So I'm gonna try to articulate a path forward and some of my reasoning. I want to let you know that I have worked with Ms. Hoppy on this. And I want to just, I want to linger on that for just a second and let you know that she has demonstrated great leadership, intelligence, and I think true balance of concepts. And I only say that because there was conversation, even at our public comments today, about her business interests on the street, her ownership interests on the street. Those are undeniable. And I just want to say from my opinion, she's been a balanced, but very intelligent, active partner, and has filled her appointed role with excellence. And I mean that, I just want to say that. So this, what I'm gonna say reflects some work that is not just mine, and Janice has helped very much. I want to talk about a plan that actually, first and foremost, it has amenity zones and sidewalks and new planting and public art and presents a coherent district, a place, I'll use Councilman Fitzgerald's terms, "a beautiful place to gather." These are things, Main Street, let's call it a Main Street. What the heck? These are things that we've actually have found some consensus about. And the reason I say this has gone on for longer than four or five years is, in fact, a lot of those concepts were articulated years ago in the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and through subsequent documents that had quite a bit of input, not just the input that we've been talking about here in the last few weeks, months. I want to talk about a plan that has three lanes. And, you know, I think one of the reasons for that, if not the most significant reason, is to try to encapsulate all of the things that I just said, that we've tried to create. And the elements that make up that type of a plan. And three lanes works. I certainly, I want to take a second. I appreciate Mr. Urban bringing forward a plan. And I understand the concept of four lanes as he's presented it, and certainly as people in a Create 38 process have presented it as well. But I think, and in some ways it's been demonstrated through that process, and even in a way through the process of vetting other four-lane options, that a three-lane option actually provides the space to do the maximum amount of things that most of the people actually have consensus on. We've also heard, and I think it's very important to reiterate this, that maybe a plan that has a reasonable time and phasing plan, that's not going to adversely impact the community, the business community, and the folks who rely on that street. And I'll take a second here to just talk about listening. Because, you know, listening, yes, we need to listen and should listen to a Create 38 process. But there's other streams of information that are coming to us. We get them all the time. We get them in these different meetings. We get them at the podium. We get them in email. We get them through social media. We get them for the businesses. The businesses who actually had another meeting and said, you know, we are concerned about the impacts of this project on our businesses, on the street. And so I think a reasonable time and phasing plan is something that ought to be a part of this. Staying with the concept of reasonableness, I'll say that a reasonable price tag has continued to come up. And I certainly agree with Mr. Matthews. We need to kind of understand the price tag and make sure we understand the components of construction and how that works. Stripping aside that detail, a reasonable price tag perhaps is an important thing that we need to listen to. We've had this conversation, we've heard this. You know, perhaps $10 million, $12 million. These are numbers that, because of other priorities, like Wadsworth or several other priorities that their task force is working on right now, that a reasonable price tag is an important aspect of this. And yes, I want to talk about a plan that's a retrofit. And I know that that's going to disappoint some. And some folks who have come and spoke to us over the last couple of meetings, certainly tonight. And I understand that. You know, just like I suppose a three-lane, me saying that a three-lane option is where we ought to be, is disappointment to others. And again, in the act of listening and trying to drive to consensus concept and try to find, strike the balance and find the right thing, I do think that a retrofit is a good option. I think there's a couple of reasons for it. And one of them, you know, I think Mr. Ann has brought up tonight about, you know, well, what are our opportunities if the future, you know, drives a different, you know, need on the street? How do we manage that? You know, a full reconstruction, obviously, much more difficult. Even a full retrofit at 60% of cost, also perhaps difficult or expensive. And so this, again, as we listen, this is something that I think we've heard, that in fact, you know, the retrofit has benefits for several reasons. I'll add one more reason, and that is the street width designation. Which I think, and I've just heard Councilman Urban reiterate that, that I think there is interest to not, you know, to avoid a street width designation, to work within the charter designation to avoid that for several reasons. And not to, you know, to try to get out of something. But because we're trying to resolve our differences, we're trying to move forward and not kind of getting into a continued fight on that is probably the best, the best concept, the best way to do it. Lastly, I want to comment on the concept of, we need to win. We heard that today. We've heard it before, right? We need to win. But I haven't heard this from one side or the other, you know. I mean, when I hear that, you know, I'm hearing it from both sides. People who don't have a side. I'm hearing it from our community. When I hear "we," I hear Wheat Ridge. Not three-lainer, four-lainer, whatever. Wheat Ridge needs a win. This is true. This is important. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, steal a page out of Councilman Urban's book. I'm gonna pull some papers out of my bag. I'm going to distribute them. And ask you to just consider a concept. Should be enough. There may even be one for you, Mark.
We could share. Make sure this guy's moving.
Yeah. Let's do that.
We could share.
Yep.
We have one. Oh, yeah, there's one more. So I want to really quickly, I'll go in order. There's six elements that I've kind of highlighted on here. And this is a diagram. This is not a design. This is a diagram saying, I think that this is a way perhaps to achieve many of the things that we do have a consensus on or we do have common ground on. Obviously, not perfectly. And, but I will say that there's a couple of things going on. One, the west end development, which is something that we know is happening, will have the ability to take a section of the road, a section of this street that's been inside of part of our concepts and really do some great things at the corner, at the sidewalks, and behind the curbs. Two, the green is a wonderful concept. We already obviously use this as a gathering space extensively. We already heard it tonight in our public comments about the criteria coming. And this has been an extremely successful place for us. It should continue to be. And I think with the collaboration of Jeff Coscoles and the ability to develop that to meet some of our mutual needs and support the street, we can do that. And we can do that behind the curb, in that location. Three, we can do a street amenity, an in-street amenity zone. But let's do it essentially less than 250 feet. Let's not trigger the street width designation. But let's put it in a place that allows us to kind of maximize the linear feat of improvements that are in that location. And here, I'm showing it essentially near Wheat Ridge Cyclopes. Four, which is articulated on both sides of the street, behind the curb is the acknowledgement that we need curb cut consolidation and we need sidewalk improvements for pedestrians. We also need, you know, things like planting, things like lights and public art, you know, things. But these can happen perhaps behind the curb. Again, these are things that we've largely agreed on. Five, we can, I think, listen to the concepts of calming, traffic calming, of creating accessibility for pedestrians to cross the street, to create accents and amenities at the corners. We'll call them bulbouts for the case of this discussion. And really say that we can celebrate these corners and make them specials. And finally, six, and it's already been demonstrated in option two of tonight's presentation regarding doing some work essentially between High Court and Uppam Street on the south side there, where we can do some amenities behind the flow line. And if you looked at that section, I mean, there's an ability for us to do amenities behind the flow line. And I think do that successfully. We know that that's been an option in the past. Lastly, just to kind of, to say it all, because it's on the page, this option perhaps gives us the ability to have bike lanes, to tie to Pierce, and to do some other things that, again, have been successful. And as we've listened to people, those were struggles. I mean, people liked the bike lanes that were put in. And bike lanes were actually something that was popular even in the Create 38 process. All it didn't fit in the final concepts. It perhaps could fit in a revised retrofit. Is this knocking it out of the park? I don't know. I hope that it can be. I believe that if you stitch together this and perhaps even go beyond Pierce and tie to the improvements that happened previously down the road, and we create a consistent, coherent urban design that creates a destination, that creates gathering spaces, that does it in a phaseable, low-impact way, and really kind of ties together a lot of the things we've heard over many years, then I think that, for our purposes, this can be knocking it out of the park. So I appreciate you just kind of bearing with me and letting me kind of get all of that out and put this out. Lastly, I will say that, and we've heard some different comments, I support one ballot question. And it's not because I don't want choice. And it's not because I don't care about listening. But I do believe that the overall ballot and where we're going to be on the ballot and the other priorities that we are going to have, we probably, and we've had this discussion, we need a second question that takes care of some of our other priorities. I believe, if we go back to this concept that we need to win, that we need to be careful, that we need to make the decision to find something to move forward with. I do want to put it on the ballot. I do want people to be able to vote on it. I do agree with, you know, with Councilmember Davis's, you know, idea of making sure that there is an article, you know, that we have a way to resolve if it didn't pass. That's important. We definitely need to move forward. And I don't think that having two questions prohibits us from doing that. And so, you know, finally, you know, I would say that I would support, you know, an ask for a discussion or, you know, an ultimate direction that we ultimately go with one question versus two. So again, if you have any questions, happy to answer them. And I appreciate... And I appreciate your patience with letting me get through all that.
George, in your plan, there's no, there's no street width issue in your plan. Is that correct?
I believe there is not, because I have created an amenity zone that's less than 250 feet.
George, thank you for being so thorough in explaining this and kind of hitting on the points. No, street width designation would not be required. The amenity zone is less than 250 feet. Yes, the curb and gutter does move there, but there only. And then the other amenity zone is when we build out to the flow line. And then the other amenity zone is in the green. And then with the West End development, there, the way that our code is, there would be amenity zones and plantings and stuff in there. So, just to hit on a few things that George has already said, and I'm gonna try not to, you know, beat a dead horse, but the things we heard was community gathering, safety, beautification, and public art. And this design embodies all of that, and inexpensive, and with quick construction, with minimal impacts to the businesses. And so, so that's why I think this is the, the best way for our community to go. Yes, there are people on one end that are five lanes or die, and there are people on one end that are full reconstruction or die, right? And there will always be on that. But we're, what we're trying to do is come here in the middle, and when I had originally said in the past that I support a retrofit option, it's for the same reasons that I support this, there are a lot of people in the middle that don't want to move the curb and gutter, but still want a main street, that want to be able to maintain three lanes, that want safety, continuous sidewalks. So we would have to go in and make sure that we are repairing and putting in sidewalks. Pierce to Harlan, we would have to address the sidewalk issues down there, make sure that they're in repair, because it's a artery into this space. And also doing, you know, beautifications and different things down there. We can also do, if we wanted to, we could also do Pierce to Harlan, traffic calming measures as far as like landscape features and stuff like that. So, this, this to me is in the middle. And a full reconstruction, yes, while would be probably the most beautiful way, and when you look at, from design standpoints, as people who do this professionally and for their life, yes, that's the way that they would want it to be. But to me, I think that to address a larger group of people, that this works. One thing that I would just like to mention that has been said of me is that people think that I'm looking, that I'm trying to do this for my business, and the reality is, yes, it's not for my business. This is for my community as a whole that I live in, that I walk in and bicycle in on a daily basis. My business is not a walk-in business. People do not walk into my business and order a pop-top medium rare. People do not drive into my business and ask to rotate their kitchen. It's not a walk-in business. It's not like that. For me, making sure that our community as a whole is supported is what's good for my business. And for me, brand recognition. So as people drive by and they see our sign, or they see it on our vehicles, that's what's good for my business. And so this is not because I think that my business is going to explode exponentially because of this. First off, we're too busy for that anyways. But it's because I think that this is good for the community I live in and I use in on a daily basis.
Mr. Ann?
I have a couple of questions. What is the cost of this plan?
Well, I think that would have to be vetted out, but we are putting it at the low end of the retrofit spectrum, which was $4.5 million.
$4.5 million. My other comment is, as you're trying to include, you know, making it safe, public art, so forth and so on, the main thing here is that you're not giving the citizens a choice and a vote. You're once again telling them, it's a three-lane, right? Here's what we're gonna do. It's gonna be at $4.5 million, but you're still not allowing them to vote and have a say.
I'm assuming that's not a question, that's a statement, so I won't answer it.
Well, you don't have to answer, but that's just a statement for me. You're still not giving them a choice to vote. I appreciate the work you put into this, but that's, that's where I'm coming from, and that's how I feel. And I think citizens still want to have a say. They still want to vote. They, they thought they had one in 2014, which I'm not going to debate now. Bottom line is, is they want a say.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective, Monica.
I, I should be clear that I do think that this should go to the ballot, that I think this should go to the ballot as one ballot question.
Well, then you still have to give them a choice. If you're gonna put this on, I mean, I'm so confused right now. First, we went through a Create Your 38 process. We spent $1,909,000, a total of almost a million dollars since 2011. So now you're changing it from retrofit to this plan on there, and I've heard reasons and excuses why we really shouldn't put a four-lane on there, because it hasn't been properly vetted or discussed, or wasn't part of the Create Your 38 process. Well, neither was this. So if you want to put this on the ballot, then you should put the four-lane plan on the ballot also.
I'm confused as usual. How are these, some of these amenity zones, you've got one color here, so it's got in-street amenity zones less than 250 feet, and I see just one of those Item 3. But if we're limiting the width of the street to three lanes unless we're expecting traffic to slalom down the street, how are we not, I mean, are we trying to just get a technicality here and say, well, because that one amenity zone is less than 250 feet, the fact that we're narrowing the whole street with curb bulbs doesn't count?
No, that's a great question.
I mean, I just don't understand.
Yeah, no, and it's, again, this is a diagram, this is not a design, but let me be very clear. We're not changing the flow line, we're not narrowing the street with those bulbouts, so, and I, you know, perhaps I should have used more colors, but what is labeled as "for" are, is all behind the curb. So the, the things that you see out there today, like parking areas, right, that take up that, that space that's out in the street, would continue to be used as, as mechanisms for, for that?
I don't understand. I'm sorry, I'm not really trying to.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Because I really, you're, you're building a bulbout on each side of the street, so how is that not narrowing the street?
Well, I think those things can be probably clarified, but let me just say that I think the bulbout is maybe more of an enhanced corner, so I don't know, I mean, you know, I.
Inside the existing curb line. I mean, it looks like it's going out of the asphalt in these drawings.
This is not a drawing, this is a diagram built with PowerPoint, so I'll be very clear about that, right? So please don't take out your scale and try to figure out how big those bulbouts are. The intention, yes, I know, yeah. The intention is absolutely that it doesn't change the flow line. So if, if the concern is that it would, then my intention is that it wouldn't, so it would be behind the curb.
Four lanes fit in this configuration?
Four lanes would fit in the consideration with the exception of the amenity zone in three, and the intention is to stripe it as three lanes. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Is it gonna look just like what we have striped out there right now?
That's a very broad question when you say that. The answer is absolutely not. The, I think, you know, practically, the intent would be to, to, and we had this discussion last time, is to, to leverage the opportunity for repaving the street, because it was on the CIP list over in the horizon, in the next five-year horizon, and actually use that opportunity to, excuse me, repave and restripe, to try to take out some of the, some of the oddities, some of the oddities that are in there right now.
I'm still lost, but I'll, I'll drop off for now.
Again, fair enough. I mean, I, I think, hopefully I made the intent clear, the diagram is, is just that. It's a, it's a reference, starting point to this concept, and, and your questions actually are, I think, completely appropriate and need to be kind of vetted out.
Yeah, Ms. Hoppy.
So two things. What if, right? The what-if came up, and so I think that we, we absolutely, if we put something this clear on, and we have financing, and we have when that financing ends, and how much it will not go over, and what the design would be specifically, and it fails, then we have a clear message from our community that they do not value a main street in three lanes. Then we have a very clear message. And so the what-if, I think, is a bridge that we cross when we get there. As far as for tonight goes, and I typed it out, I'll be seeking a consensus for one ballot question in regards to 38th Avenue. And the reason why I typed it out is because there's a lot of pieces to it. And the consensus I'm gonna look for is repaving and restriping 38th Avenue to three lanes, from Sheridan to Wadsworth, where it is currently three lanes, so that doesn't mean going three to three, doing the phases in and outs as it does. Redeveloping the green space in front of Stevens Elementary to include an outdoor amphitheater and gathering space. Add amenity zones up to 250 feet without moving the curb and gutter over 250 feet in the Pierce to Uppam area. Build out amenities to the flow line on the south side of the street, High Court to Uppam. Repair and add sidewalks, bulbouts on corners, raised crosswalks, planters where needed for traffic buffers from Pierce to Uppam. Add new lighting, matching benches, trashcans, and public art from Pierce to Uppam. Work with property owners to consolidate long curb cuts, mine being one of those, from Harlan to Wadsworth. Add lighting, benches, trashcans, bulbouts and planters for traffic buffers where appropriate from Pierce to Harlan. I think we cannot leave a black hole in there. I think we need to address it as a whole. And I would like the project to be financed with a 0.25% of one cent tax, sales tax increase for three years, not to exceed $4.5 million. Any additional funds above $4.5 million within the three-year sunset would go into the CIP budget. And I would like staff to work with the city attorney to be sure that the design stays within the charter limitations and does not trigger a street width designation. And that's what I'll be looking for, and I'll pass this around so you guys can see. Whoops, wrong way.
Janice, could you repeat the financial portion again?
Yes.
Especially for people who are listening on.
I passed all mine out, but, no, you're fine. So, to be funded with a 0.25% of one cent, sales tax increase for three years, not to exceed $4.5 million. Any additional funds above $4.5 million within the three-year sunset will go into the CIP budget, to be utilized elsewhere in our city.
Thank you. I have to go with Mr. Fitzgerald. It's, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, I just want to say I hate this plan. I, well, I hate this plan, but, and it's a big but. If politics is the art of the possible, it is, it's obvious that we have a huge rock to climb over in the street width, the potential street width challenge that would come with any other plan, which would delay doing this. And we've already been at this for five years. We, we need to make a decision. We need to move forward, and we need to do it according to the timeline tonight. So, because this gets us over the, the street width designation problem, and because we can make this decision tonight, I think I'll, I'll have to reluctantly, hatefully support this. The other thing is, you know, we were elected to make decisions. We've got to make decisions, and these are not easy decisions. But we just cannot keep delaying things by saying, well, we can't decide, so let the people decide. You know, everybody, there are a variety of differing opinions on this, as we've all experienced for all these years. So, I reluctantly support this, this plan.
Mr. Ann?
I won't support this, because I strongly feel there needs to be two questions on the ballot. I mean, this was just presented to us, and in 10 minutes now we're getting a consensus to put this on the ballot. We need to put and give the citizens a choice. Now, I know we need to make a decision, and it's our job to make a decision as elected officials, but it's my job to represent the people that elected me. And if I, part of that is saying, you know what? The citizens in 2014 didn't want three lanes on 38th Avenue. City survey last year said the same thing. So if I'm gonna continually ignore what the citizens have been telling us, because this is whosever agenda it might be, that's wrong. Part of my job is to listen to all my constituents, but mostly the majority of the vote, and I won't support this plan. I won't support any question if you're not gonna have a four-lane, two choices to give the citizens on the ballot. I just can't. It's just wrong.
And Mr. Matthews.
Are you sure you mean three lanes, Sheridan to Wadsworth? That's what it says here, because we're gonna have a double left turn lane, and how does that go into one lane?
So currently, we have 800 feet, 800 feet to merge.
So it's not all the way from Wadsworth?
No, it's, it's where the, yeah, where the three lanes are currently.
Uppam to Chase, basically.
The three lanes.
So as you come, as you come in east, then five and then the three lanes.
Now, I have another question. I just ran some quick numbers. If we extrapolate this out, that the full width, the full length of 38th, that comes out to be a $13.5 million cost, because it's about 1,500 feet from Uppam to Pierce, times three is 40, is, gets you to about the distance, and I'm, you know, it's like 5,300 or whatever the other end, so it becomes actually more expensive than some of the options already on the table.
So the only place where there is a, an amenity zone like you saw, with, let's say, it wouldn't be a, with a, it wouldn't be with a Chase, because it would be a real amenity zone. The only place that that would happen, at the 300 feet per linear foot, would be at number three. Everything else is done, everything else is done within the existing flow line.
What happens to their parking?
Their parking stays there. It would be done in, so, so they would have the parking, and then there would be the amenity zone. So like, they could put cafe tables out there, have little patio tables if they wanted, but the parking lot would be in between it, in that spot.
I'm sorry, that's right in front of Fran's Cafe, isn't it? Well, the last time I pulled in there, you could hardly get in there with a car without the amenity zone.
Well, it's a, it's a go-in and a go-out, and so it would be built in, it would be built into the flow line, therefore they wouldn't lose their parking. What they would gain then would be an outdoor seating area, where if somebody wanted to take their coffee out to the amenity zone, they could.
So if you direct your attention to the screen, one of the pictures that we had shown in the council memo that we didn't talk about tonight in the interest of brevity, was this very quick little sketch. The red area would be where that amenity zone would be. There wouldn't be wholesale changes to the parking lot if I'm reading what, what.
That's showing us a bike lane.
We have to work through some of that.
Here.
No, I understand. We'll have to, we'll.
Yeah, the bike, the bike lane would end, would end there at that sidewalk and go into, they would be able to then access Wheat Ridge Cyclopes right there, through that parking lot.
We, we as staff haven't had a chance to respond to all of this either, so we can certainly look at this and figure out where all the pieces, parts fit, and what doesn't fit, and what will fit, and, and, and work on that.
Ms. Davis.
So I thank you guys for your time on this. I know it probably took a lot, as well as Zach. Thanks for your time. And I, I completely understand the two ballot questions, because in my mind, I, after Zach presented it last week or two weeks ago, I was like, let's do it. Let's put it on the ballot, all things equal, and I mean that when I say all things equal, because I think it needs to be, because I think that was a part of the Create the 38th process, is they wanted a certain width of sidewalks, and they wanted certain amenity zones. So I think it's hard, you know, again, to say, well, we can do that for the three-lane, but the four-lane, we might miss some of that in some of the areas. So I do think, had, if, had we had two ballot questions, I would say, fine, two ballot questions, all things equal. But I think for me, in this whole process, it goes back to the what-if. And then, to me, the what-if is what? And then, to me, the what-if is what if it fails? Because what if it fails both of them? Because one, maybe one ballot question's 9.5 million, the other ballot question is 11 million. And right there, sticker shock might go, "No, no," you know? And then, so my, my thought is, is what if they both fail? Then we're, we're back to where we are of, here we are again, what are we going to do? So then, you know, that's my idea, at least the thought of one ballot question, is for that reason, with the caveat that if we have one ballot question and it fails, then we, as a council, commit that we go back to the four lanes with some type of traffic control and our best efforts to improve amenity zones. With that being said, then we would hear the voice of both, both folks. So if some of the folks are saying, "Four lanes, four lanes," then they'll vote no on this, and then as a council, we'll commit to, you know, setting something up that takes it somewhat back to similar how it was. I don't, I'm not saying exactly back, because I do think there's ways that we can respect the Create Your 38 process, even if we have to go back by slowing down traffic, which I know the four-lane folks who presented at that Create Your 38 did say, "Fine, take it down to 30 miles an hour, but we still want four lanes." They said that. So, I think that if we can have a vision of, okay, if it doesn't pass, this is where we're going, then the folks still have a, have a, have an option by voting for one, then they'll know that the next will come up. My big concern, again, is going to be the sticker shock of 9 and 1/2 million and 10 and 1/2 million, or 11 million, or whatever numbers that, that they come up with, and then it'd be no, no. And then with that in mind also, again, trying to look for our entire city, I worry that then that will also perhaps affect the Dirt Task Force question, that we also might be presenting as well, that we might end up with a no, 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 and not only no, are you crazy? So, I, I just think that, again, I think a lot of it's strategic. I don't think it's tricky strategic. We're not trying to fool anybody, but I think we're trying to set it up in a way that we have a clear answer in the end, that we're not going to come up with a what-if at the end, and, and that, you know, hope, and, and that we'll no at the end of the ballot question, because the other way, we do run the chance of two no's, and then we're back here again. So, again, I'm kind of with Tim. Not, I think it's a good, good solution. Not my vision perfectly, but I think it'll begin my vision, and it could just be the beginning to some others things that we can do on the street. So, you know, with further discussion, even if it means people have to sleep on it a little bit, and we have to get clarification, it is something I wouldn't mind vetting. Even going, again, going back and talking to neighbors and, and, and community members to see, "Hey, what if we did this?" So, that's just my thought. I, I do, you know, worry about the two ballots, questions, and two no's.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
He's already spoken on this, and I haven't had a chance to speak.
Yeah, I, thank you for pointing that out.
Looking towards the possible, and trying to find a way to bring this to a close, thinking on how would we bring this to the ballot, the only way that I, that I, or one of the ways in which I could see this being brought to the ballot, is if prior to this being brought to the ballot, there was a resolution or some type of written agreement brought before council that discussed how we would move forward upon the passage or failing of this ballot question, and what that would look like, because we have already gone through that, and we didn't get very far. So, with the, with the failure of two B. So if there is a clear delineation of what does the failure of this ballot question specifically mean to the residents of Wheat Ridge, and what does the passage of this ballot question specifically mean? And that, that would include that there would be no change in street width, so that there is a clear delineation on, on both sides, is, to alleviate concerns on, on all fronts, because when you talk about bulbouts, that, that by its very definition, you're going out somewhere, so it's not bulving in. So, that, there's, and when you talk about trying to overcome the street width rock, my, I don't want to just ignore the concept of a street width concern by just pretending it's not there, and, and it had been talked about with the city attorney, that this idea of doing piecemeal amenity zones along the corridor pretty soon end up being a corridor where the road has become narrowed, and that becomes a, a street width. So, to, to that point, I just want to make sure that we're not ending up in a situation where we've done things that, when put together, it looks like we've circumvented what is a, a city charter provision. So, hold on. So, in addition to that, I, I just, I'll go back to the point that I would, it would be my preference that voters be given a choice of three lanes and four lanes. If that direction isn't able to get momentum or consensus, and this is the only way forward, then I would ask that there be a written resolution or other way to clearly delineate that on the passage or failing of this ballot question, this is specifically what will and won't happen, so that we're all crystal clear about what, because I want something to occur on 38th, one way or the other. And I, I don't think that the failure of this ballot question, or any ballot question, means that residents do not want 38th to be our main street or not. That's not the question. It's specifically, as it relates to the, the number of lanes. People want to have this be our main street. That's what I've heard from folks. It's specifically related to the lanes, so I don't think that's necessarily true, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, just to respond, for clarity, because I want to, I do want to clear this up, and, and, and I, the unfortunate use of the word term "bulbout," so I, I apologize for that. It, it truly is not intended to actually, or, you know, to, to conflict with this notion as, as written in this, written in this. We're not trying to circumvent anything. I legitimately, legitimately want to kind of honor the, the charter language. That is the intent. Let's call, let's call them, and I, please put this in the record, let's call them enhanced corners, okay? And, and let's strike the term "bulbout," because that's not, that's not, that's not really what the intention was. The intention was to enhance the corner experience, okay? And there's a number of components to that, that really have to do with the raised pathways and, and, you know, other, other enhancements. I do not, by this diagram, again, this diagram, intend for there to be a, you know, any kind of, kind of sneaky way to, to, to restrict, to, to change the flow line. You know, if there's opportunity to, to create space at, you know, at, at the corners, you know, and that opportunity exists behind the curb, great, let's, let's enhance these corners as, as, as kind of thresholds as you move down the street visually, and for people to gather again and, and have safe passages across the street. That's the intention. So, just to make that very, very clear. And, and we cannot use that, that other, that other term.
I had, I had him first, but I think both of you have spoken on this before, but, so I'm going to have to go with him.
I, I just. A lot, I agree with a lot of things that people have said, and I, I agree with Counselor Davis that if we put something on the ballot and it fails, that in itself is, is a choice, is, is the second choice. And I'm not opposed to having some agreement about, you know, what that next step would be. But I, I do want to, Mr. Dahl, our attorney, has given us samples of what some questions might be like, and due to the, the requirements of the law, the way these questions would have to be asked, if we were to have choices, is just totally non-understandable. I've read this about two or three times, and I've been through all these sessions, but if you'll bear with me, I'll just read this and show you that it, this is almost requiring an automatic no, because nobody's going to be able to read this and understand what it says. The question would be, "Shall City of Wheat Ridge taxes be increased by X annually commencing January 1, 2017, and by whatever additional amounts are raised annually thereafter by a temporary sales tax increase of X, the proceeds of which shall be exclusively restricted to described project? Such increase not to be effective unless and until one final approval of a street width designation for 38th Avenue from blank to blank of described widths and design or referred to above description pursuant to Section 5.20 of the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter, and two ballot question number X regarding the alternative shall not have been approved at the election on November 3, or whatever it is. Such tax increase to terminate when a total of X has been raised or on Y, whichever comes first, and proceeds from such tax increase and any interest in investment income from the same B collected, and, and it continues from there." You know, that is so complicated, there is absolutely no way anybody's going to say yes to that. So I just don't think we can have that kind of a complicated question on the ballot.
I think Mr. Matthews would have been next.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to look at this and absorb what you're telling us here. And if I'm reading this right now, except for the couple places, that one 250 in-street amenity zone, everything else is sidewalks, where are the other amenity zones, and the trees, and the, all the, all the, all the fun stuff that we've been fighting over trying to get in?
Yeah, well, that's right. They're, they're, they're largely not, not there. However, and I think Councilmember Hoppy explained it pretty well at the beginning, in, in the West End Development, they will, by Streetscape Design Manual, be required to put in that, and I think they would be willing to, to, to do that. It will be behind the curb. They will have the space to do that, to create the tree planting and the sidewalk width behind the curb, okay? You can also essentially do that in the green, and in many ways, it exists right now. It's a wide sidewalk. Again, when the green gets redeveloped, those, that amenity zone is there. It's behind the curb. So those will happen. And then in area number six, which is the area between High Court and Uppam Street, again, that's an amenity zone, but it's behind the flow line as described in, in our amenity, in our memo. And then in number three, that's another piece. So in fact, we've stitched together several amenity zones, okay?
Well, I understand.
Okay, and that, but they're not inside of it, but they're not inside of the flow line.
There's 1,500 linear feet, thereabouts, between Uppam and Pierce.
That's right, and so they're not inside, and.
On one side of the street, you've got 300 feet of amenity zone. On the other side of the feet of the street, you have three, maybe 300 feet of amenity zone. How does that?
It's not, they're not, they're.
Concept of what we've been fighting.
They're not in, they're not inside, well, no, the, the amenity zones are there. Are they as, are they as complete and as, and going as far as some of the, some of the designs?
Well, if they're not outside the sidewalk, are they inside the sidewalk?
I, I've just been saying, yes, they're inside of the flow line.
For the full length, full 1,500 feet?
I don't know which 1,500 feet you're talking about. I'm saying in my diagram, in number one, they're inside of the flow, hold on a second. In, in my diagram, okay? In number one, inside of the flow line, behind the flow line. Number two, behind the flow line. Number three, outside of, in the street, less than 250 feet. Number six, behind the flow line.
I understand that, but like, for instance, from High Court to Pierce, on the south side of the street, we have five feet of sidewalk and no amenity zone?
Yeah, so here's, here's the thing, yeah, and here's the thing, when you look at our street, when you go down and look at our street, block by block, which the retrofit that was presented at the Create Your 38 was basically dropping a bunch of red spots along our street, and there were things like taking out mature trees and putting in one tree. And so when you go down our street, block by block, there are areas, like in front of the dialysis center, they have six trees, nice landscaping, and a nice sidewalk there already. Do we need an amenity zone in front of that? And so, this really is looking at the street and the character of the street that is already there, and maintaining the character of the street that we have. And so with that, we save money. Why would we go and put three trees in front of six trees? Why would we take out six mature trees and put in one tree? So, the problem is that this is a more efficient application to what, to what our community already has.
And why did we bother with Create 38 if we were just going to take what's existing and, and stitch something together? I mean, the whole idea was to have a corridor that was consistent, had trees every 100 feet, and light poles every 100 feet, and an amenity zone that people could recognize, and a sidewalk. I mean, I'm not understanding this concept. It's more or less just saying, well, what's there is good enough.
Could I ask, is that possible that there could be a phase two?
That, that's up to, I guess, Councilman.
Well, no, hold on, I, I want to say, and, and I understand that the diagram doesn't, is not a drawing. Again, I'm going to keep repeating that, and it needs to be vetted by staff. But I will point to the consensus. I absolutely, and, and I stated this, I've said it twice, I will say it a third time, that what we do need is, we, we need all of these things stitched together. We need to pick up the improvements that were done years ago down the street. And if you look at the consensus carefully, you'll see trashcans, benches, lights, those things repeat, and those things, they don't exist right now. They do not exist right now. A coherent, you know, a coherent urban design, this may not be everything that we want, but it does have, it does have the, the, the ability and the pieces and parts to actually create, you know, a coherent look across, across the thing. We may not get as many trees, you know? We may not get as many amenity zones as, as we were looking at, and that's, you know, in, on the, on the positive side, as opposed, it's less expensive, and the negative side, we're not getting as much as, as, as we were talking about. But it is not merely taking what we have and saying it's good enough. Absolutely not that. That's not, you know, that's not, I hope that's not the ultimate interpretation of this, and I think that once we kind of take it from diagram to a little bit more work, that we can kind of hash out that.
Part of the consensus I'm looking forward to is that staff works with the city attorney to be sure that we stay within the charter limitations and does not trigger a street width designation. So, while looking at this diagram, there is, there is no hoodwink to be had. We want them to work with the attorney to make sure that it doesn't trigger the street width designation.
Mr. Ren had a question.
I have a question and a comment. Mr. Dahl, these are just templates, correct, for the ballot questions? These can be kind of maneuvered or altered a little bit? Okay, so, what we see here, and what Councilman Fitzgerald read, isn't exactly what will be on the ballot if there were two questions. It can be. Okay, I want to make that clear. The other comment was, it was retrofit piece. So now it's this piece. So the understanding is, you're trying to avoid the street width designation and illegal protests, is that correct?
Among all, many other benefits to this, that is one of them.
Okay, but those are two important things. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Mr. Urban.
I just, as we talk about the specific element relating to the green, because that is a, a school property, and we're looking to raise the sales tax to fund these improvements, would, what type of arrangement are we going to have with the school district and, and those improvements? And the school district is also going for a bond issuance this cycle, how does, how do those intersect, knowing that we're asking for a sales tax increase that could be used for improvements on the school property? And I just want to make sure that we're clear about any, the improvements that we're making to school property, is there an MOU in place? Is there, what types of arrangements do we have with the school district relative to these improvements, and how do we?
Sure. Yeah, as I mentioned before, we, we currently have an MOU in place that allows
Yeah, as I mentioned before, we, we currently have an MOU in place that allows us to use their, their property, um, and even serve alcohol on school property, um, for certain events. And we've had discussions with the school district over the last several years during this process and the previous process about the future of that. Um, there, there was actually, um, private developers who were interested in purchasing the parking lot to redevelop it. That didn't move forward. But, um, as far as we know at this point, the school district is interested in working with us. Um, I think what they've told us, and this has been months ago, so it would have to be reconfirmed, but, um, they said, I think they would wanna maintain ownership, but they would be willing to enter into some type of agreement where the city, um, could reconstruct and create some type of plaza. I think they might even said they would even, probably, they could maintain it for us, or be, they would be parties to maintain it. So I think there's options for that agreement. That obviously would have to be, be worked out. We know today that there's, there's, um, support from the school district to work with us on, um, utilizing that property, um, more than it is today.
We know how much it would cost to, with the price tag for the green itself, or any kind of...
We don't. I don't, I don't know if we got a price when, what, what process? There's so many, 2014 process, right? There was a design done. I don't know if they, there was a price with that, does anyone remember?
Do you agree, you want to do the pricing?
No, okay.
I, I, I think that as much as we want to create, uh, space and, and create gathering space, um, I do see that as somewhat of a sticking point, and I, I think that that needs to be either ironed out or otherwise, uh, figured out so that we're clear about how the city is improving other entities' properties and, and what that looks like, and making sure that we're crystal clear on, on that element. Just because it is a, it's not a private entity, but it's a separate entity from the city.
I, I think those are all points, that's a point well taken, and I think that this is a consensus, and, and I think we have to work through a lot of these points. Uh, I'm not sure who I had first. I think I had...
Mine's just, I, I just wanna do a, a point of clarification, 'cause I think a lot of things can, um, be misinterpreted. But I, I think one of the questions was, are, is this being done to avoid, um, street with designation? And I, you know, I don't see it as avoiding. I think, um, I think what, when I see this plan, I think it's to try to make the process not as complicated, in that, um, we've heard folks are concerned about tearing up the street, about affecting their businesses, about the, um, you know, the permanence that even Mr. Rand spoke of earlier. How permanent are some of these changes, and what would it cost to, to fix it? You know, if we did need to go back to four lanes types of things? So I think it's, um, you know, when I see this, although again, not my top plan, but I could see, uh, the purpose, and I could also see, understand to not tear out perfectly great trees. But it, it's to perhaps create this environment within the street as least complicated as possible. Um, I mean, I think that's what I see in this development, um, or this plan. I understand a lot of it needs to be hashed out, and probably a lot of it we need to talk about, but, um, again, I, I would support the consensus. The other part of that consensus I would add is that we do, um, as a council, come up with some type of language that if, in fact, it does not pass, um, what the next steps will be specifically.
I wanna add that the, um, the street with designation, in a way, this plan respects the street with designation and leaves it there in the charter instead of changing the charter and removing it forever. So I think that, um, that we have to look at it, maybe from that viewpoint as well, that there is some actual respect for what was done before.
Was that being discussed?
I'm sorry?
Was that, was removing the street with charter being discussed?
What, what I'm saying is that in order to do this, if you had, had changed the street with designation, you have to change the charter, which therefore removes that designation that's in our charter, that particular item.
I don't think so.
Were we discussing that?
No, no, not within this. No, we're not. Or you're not. Go ahead.
So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for consensus again, and I'm gonna read it all back through, which everybody has. Um, and then to your point of a plan, um, I think that, you know, maybe we can take some ideas on the plan and then have staff come back to that, but, um, for now, the consensus I'm looking for is to move forward with one ballot question in regards to 38th Avenue, Main Street development. Direct staff and the city attorney to draft the ballot question to include repaving and restriping 38th Avenue to three lanes, Sheridan to Wadsworth where it is currently three lanes. Developing the green space in front of Stevens Elementary to include an outdoor amphitheater and a gathering space. Add amenity zones up to 250 feet without moving the curb and gutter over 250 feet in the Pierce to Uplum area. Build out amenities to the flow line on the south side of the street, High Court to Uplum. Repair and add sidewalks, uh, corner enhancements, raised crosswalks, and planters where needed for traffic buffers from Pierce to Uplum. Add lighting, matching benches, trashcans, public art from Pierce to Uplum. Work with property owners to consolidate long curb cuts from Harlan to Wadsworth. Add lighting, benches, trashcans, and curb enhancements. Planters for traffic buffers where appropriate in the Pierce to Harlan area. And to be financed by 0.25% of one cent in a sales tax increase for three years, not to exceed 4.5 million. Any additional funds above 4.5 million within the three-year sunset would go into the CIP budget. And staff should work with the city attorney to be sure that the design stays within the charter limitations and does not trigger a street with designation.
Okay, do I have a consensus on that? One, two, three, four. Then it is.
So Ben, um, we need a consensus to look at, what did you call it, Kristy? Or Jac? It's the thing that you...
You know, yeah, like a, a plan that if this does not, I'd like, uh, add an additional consensus that if this ballot language does not pass, um, that we review and come up with a plan for a four-lane, um, option that we will, and we can't revert our clauses in, and we certainly can't put it in the ballot language, but that would, if it doesn't pass, that the council has a plan of what it would go to.
Mr., yeah, sorry, go ahead, Monica.
So we can be specific and say, if this fails, put all this in writing on the ballot, or, well, not on the ballot, but separately, that 38th Avenue will go back to four lanes. Not discuss, not, you know, figure out something else. It reverts back.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's for us to discuss, like, what do we revert back to? You know, as far as with a speed limit, with, you know, those types of things, to still perhaps honor the Main Street idea that, as Mr. Urban has pointed out, is still what our community wants.
Sure.
Uh, but yes, I think it needs to be pretty specific.
Well, we can tweak out the specifics, but I wanna be specific on the lanes, because that is the source of contention and something that I don't want. Oh, what did they mean? Or, you know, no, we're gonna, we're gonna do something else. So if we can be specific on the four lanes, and then we can work out the details as far as amenities, as far as whatever else.
Well, and I would like to go further to say not only the four lanes, but also perhaps some of those details, so that people understand what they're getting.
Exactly.
So that, so that if, if, let's just say, it doesn't go back to how it was, that they're not misled, because we'll have a plan to have it go back to, you know, four lanes, but maybe, you know, in this area where there used to be parking, there'll be this, or, you know, who knows? But at least come up with some kind of rough idea of what it would look like. But I think a lot of times we hear people say, "We voted to have it go back." And again, that wasn't the vote either, so I don't wanna mislead people.
Well, that's why I wanna be specific.
Right, exactly.
With four lanes, so that there's no doubt.
Well, you'd also have to have a cost factor in there, too, if you're gonna do that.
Well, I think it would go, I, I, I think the problem with that is the cost factor we're gonna have to figure out. I mean, we already know that in three to five years or whatever, we're restriping, so then we just restripe it in a way that's meeting folks' four lanes, and if it means we can add a bike lane in it, or add some parking, or, you know, we're able to squeeze in our budget a few planters or some art, then I think that's the thing. But I think it's, I mean, I think it's gonna be hard for us to come up with a cost if we already know that we're gonna have to have a cost to do anything on that street. So I think with that in mind, we have to understand that a lot of it's gonna be about restriping and maybe squeezing in what we can financially, or phase it in.
I think it would be wholly appropriate to say that for $750,000 or some very low estimate, to say that we would provide some, uh, not necessarily going back to specifically the way it was, but to provide some type of, uh, specifically four-lane design, understanding that the end caps from Wadsworth to Sheridan have, uh, two travel lanes with a, uh, middle turn lane, so that's five lanes there, which do have, uh, 35 mile an hour traffic flow, so it's not a highway. But the, there, the original restriping only costs $178,000 or some number therein, so it is an incredible expense to restripe the, the entire roadway. But, uh, there should be some number in there that, in that resolution or other agreement that council can say that the alternative to putting it into some sort of workable fashion, should this ballot measure not succeed, it is a workable alternative, albeit a less, uh, snazzy or otherwise, you know, uh, developed alternative. It is an alternative that we can move forward with, and that's what I'm looking for. Something that is better than just coming back to square one and starting all over again, and I, I don't wanna...
Yeah, I don't think it should be... Did you? Okay, I thought we had a discussion, so go ahead.
Mr. Matthews would like to add some...
I'm confused again. I'm trying to figure out here, uh, Councilman Hoppe's deal says one consensus for one ballot issue. We're talking about two ballot issues.
No.
Not a ballot question.
Separate agreement.
It's a, it's a council resolution.
We'll work with Mr. Dahl on...
I'm trying to figure out just what all are we talking about sending back, 'cause staff is gonna be confused. What are we directing them actually to work on? This plan, Plan A, Plan B, Mr. Urban's plan?
I, I think that...
I think we got it.
What are we gonna be looking at a month down the road?
Yep. We got, we got this one consensus, which is all written down, we got that. The second consensus that I, my understanding is to put together some type of resolution or something that will come forward for council to approve that talks about what's gonna happen if this fails.
That's, I'm just...
Yep, and then you guys will have to fine tune what that is, looks like.
I mean, at some point in time, what options are we actually looking at for final, for, for the next consideration? We've got this kind of a three-lane option. Are we looking at A or, or, and a four lane?
No, no. What he just said.
This is one consensus here, which is the three-lane option, and then also, for a ballot question, and then also bring some, back some type of agreement, a resolution or some, some document that council approves that talks about if this doesn't pass this ballot question, what happens?
What happens?
And you guys can fine tune exactly what happens. Does it go back to three lanes, four lanes, five lanes? What, what does the street look like if this does not pass?
And you have to do it in such a way that it's not this ballot question or this, so that it's not where you've, you've, you've put yourself into a situation where you're dangling out another option. That's what I'm saying.
So you...
Both of you are.
Yeah, no.
Not on the ballot.
It's not on the ballot.
So that people know, if I vote yes on this, this is what I'm gonna get. If I vote no on this, this is what I'm gonna get.
This is what I'm gonna get, so...
But it's not a double ballot question that people could go, "I am so sick and tired."
Right, right.
And then we're back here again.
I just wanna make sure that, 'cause it, because in many ways, this was initiated by Councilmember Urban, that, that what the city manager just kind of recounted was an accurate representation of what you were asking. Yes, okay, then, so I think we're in, I think we're in agreement.
I, I'm, I just wanna make sure I understand. Are we throwing all the Create 38 stuff out now?
No. What, what stuff? I mean, people participated and shared their views, that we're not throwing those out. I mean, you know, uh, we just have, we have a consensus on, on, I mean, I think that staff just, you know, articulated, yes.
I think...
It's this, this, this is the consensus, is to do something like this.
Right.
That's actually, the only option now we're considering is that option that we just got looked at, with real cost figures, even...
That's the option for the ballot. Then we will agree as a council. If that fails, we will grant on the manual and...
It, it, my understanding, just to be clear, on the budget, is that, um, part of the consensus is a quarter cent for three years, not to exceed four and a half million, so whatever, whatever...
Quarter of one cent.
So it'd be four and a half million dollar project, basically.
Four, uh-huh.
Would we have time, if it comes out to be 5.2 or something, to revisit that?
I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that specific in the next couple weeks. Um, I, I think if you're gonna move forward in this direction, I would recommend just keeping a, a not to exceed, and then if it passes, we design specifically to that number.
I, we didn't get a consensus on Kristy's. We didn't, no, we didn't raise our hands. No.
Just for the record, what was the count on, uh, Councilman Hoppe's consensus?
Four, three.
Four, three, okay.
Do we have any elected officials matters that, that are, that are need to be recorded tomorrow?
I do have a neighborhood meeting tomorrow evening at Trinity Church at 45th and Newland at 6:00 PM. Look forward to seeing all the neighbors there. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had one thing I wanted to remind folks, that, um, they'll be getting their primary ballot, election ballots in the mail, um, soon, and you can mail those ballots in, in the envelope that's provided, or you could also bring that envelope to the ballot box at City Hall. And we also have a ballot box in the front lobby of City Hall, so... And that is only for people who are registered with a party, Democrat or Republican.